Ille has not turned Guam is called to order. I would like to ask Senator Blas if he can lead us in the prayer.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Your Lord, as we gather here this morning, to be able to do the business that our people had elected us to do, I have, we ask for your guidance, we ask for your wisdom, we ask that you, your hand in helping us to craft legislation that would do good for our people for now and for the generations to come. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen. Amen to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Senator Panglinen, can you please lead us in the recitation of Inifresi?
Inifresi. Ine ma statke lo, ye hinasoku. Ima statkelun, de kura sonhu. Zan imasfigo, na ni nasinyahu. Uufresin maisajo, para bai puteh, para bai hu protehi, zan hu defendi, i hinengeni koutura, i lingwahi, i ari, i hanum, zan itanu tsamoru. Ni, ni irenshaku, direto, gene nasduu stata. Esti, u afimai geilu i bibliya, i bandirahu, zan i banderanguahan.
Senator Tony Ada, can you please lead us in the Guam hymn, and then Senator Tom Ada to lead us in the singing of the national anthem. Guam hymn first. I see, Senator Tony Ada, Guam hymn.
Ahem. O, intalika, vago, opes hago, then i Guam hymn. (Singing) Fanogi tsamoru, puri tanota, kan'tan matku nanya, gitonu iluka. Para i ora, para i gloria, abiba i eslacen para. Para i ora, para i gloria, abiba i eslacen para. Doldui tempui pasparaheita, zan gene ni la yitna bendisyon. Kontraipiligu, nafansafulham, duus protehi islan Guam. Kontraipiligu, nafansafulham, duus protehi islan Guam. Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars, through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched, were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night, that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free, and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. The clerks, please take, do the roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yeah.
Senator Tony Ada.
Good morning, here.
Senator Ogden.
Yeah.
Senator Blas.
Yeah.
Senator Calvo.
Here.
Senator Cruz.
Here.
Senator Espaldan.
Senator Gutters.
How do you do, Prim?
Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Palacios.
Yeah.
Senator Panglinen.
Yeah.
Senator Respechio.
Senator Titegui.
Senator Tenorio.
Speaker Wampin.
Present.
Madam Speaker, I wish to report the ears of coro.
Thank you very much. I recognize the Majority Leader, Senator Respechio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning, colleagues. I move that we excuse the following senators, Senators Munia Barnes, Senator Tenorio, Senator Espaldan, and Senator Titegui.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you. On item seven, Madam Speaker, I call for the approval of the Legislative Journal dated April 26, 2010, to May 3, 2010, subject to correction.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered. Are there any messages from the governor?
Yeah, there are also messages from Imagallan Guam, and I move the same.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are reports from standing committees, and I move that these reports be appended to today's session journal.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
There are no reports of select committees, but I move that the, on item 12, introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, I move that Bill Number 385-30 to Bill Number 431-30 be given its first reading.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And the same, Madam Speaker, I move that resolution numbers 369-30 to 409-30 be given its first reading.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
As well as certificate numbers 180-30 to certificate number 201-30 be given its first reading.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
My first motion, Madam Speakers, I, as you know, there are 22 bills in the second reading, there's one confirmation, so there's 23 agenda items, and you've called us into session for this week. We plan to vote by noon time on Friday, and so my first motion is my customary motion, that if in the event we're in the second reading file, and we get to a bill, and the author feels that some other information is pending, or maybe even the committee report may be lacking, I move that this bill not be passed on file, but rather set aside until such time the author indicates to you that they're ready to have this bill heard by this body.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
My next motion is going to be a little different. If, in the event, Madam Speaker, the sponsor's not here, rather than pushing the bill to the side, it just goes to the bottom of the agenda. We've seen in previous sessions that you've been extremely accommodating, but we've seen when we are ready at this particular bill, and the individual's not here, that just moves this place, and I, because we have such an aggressive agenda as we always do, I move that if the sponsor's not here, when the bill's ready to be heard by this body, that it go to the bottom of the second reading file, rather than being set aside.
It's important, Senators, to understand what this motion is, because if you are not present in the hall at the time that your bill is up, that your bill will go to the bottom of the file. Are there any objections to that motion? They are being non-sordid.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The next motion is I move that any resolution or certificate of commendary, congratulatory, commendary, condolence in nature, be approved by this body and duly adopted, and that all senators be co-sponsors, and that the author work with the Legislative Council and the clerk in the finalization and preparation of such certificate.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I ask at this time that you recognize Senator Palacios for a motion to override a vetoed bill. Thank you.
Senator Palacios, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the veto of Bill 304 by the governor, I move that this body override the vetoed Bill 304. Bill 304, Madam Speaker, is actually a proposal to include the criminal investigators supervisor, tax investigators, and assistant tax investigators of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and the staff of the Department of Agriculture in the Regulatory Section, to include them in the Compensation of Public Safety and Law Enforcement Officers Act by amending, of course, Section 3 and Section 4, essentially to include them in the 40% pay adjustment or salary adjustment under the Law Enforcement Pay Adjustment Act that we passed, for which currently the police, the fire, and the, and other law enforcement officers are already included. I think this budget year, they, they would be implementing the third increment of that 10%, of the, of the total 40%. And so I ask my colleagues to consider this and, and review it. This is, in fairness and recognition of their law enforcement work, their law enforcement requirements, and the authority, I guess, to seize items relative, of course, to the, to their functions, to their respective functions, and to enforce other regulatory statute. I'd like to remind the body that we passed this with eight, eight or nine votes, the last time the governor vetoed this. I cannot understand why. Sufficient funding have been identified, well, from, on both agencies, the Department of Revenue and Taxation, I understand, it cannot be more than $40,000 to implement this, as there are just very few people with the Department of Agriculture, I think there are only three staff involved. The fundings have been identified, it's just a matter of the authority now to place these employees under that category. And for that, I ask my colleagues to please consider and, and support the override on Bill 304-30. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So your motion, then, is they want to, to place, then, notwithstanding the objections of Malagallan, Magallan Guam, on vetoed Bill Number 304, to place the vetoed bill in the voting file for an override?
On the third reading file for a voting.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Respechio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Under legislative concurrence, I move from your Committee on Education on the appointment of Ms. Teresa Esperetta to serve as a member of the Guam Education Policy Board with the, with your committee's recommendation to confirm, I move that this be placed in the voting file.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And, thank you, Madam Speaker. I have no further motions at this time, and I believe we're on the top of the second reading file. Thank you.
We are in second reading, and the first bill on the agenda is substitute bill Number 100-30 COR, and I recognize Senator Ogden.
Goodness and haffaday, Madam Speaker, and to our fellow colleagues. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Bill Number 100-30 COR substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land on third reading with some discussion, please.
And would you like to speak on the bill?
Yes, please.
Okay, you may proceed.
Unless there's not going to be any discussion on the floor. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I think that if you take a look at the legislation, there's, there's some things that have transpired over the course of just the last 12 years, that I have been a party to as a member of this august body. And one was being able to proceed towards realizing the recognition and the acknowledgement of the Supreme Court and the unified judiciary as being one, one unified judiciary, so to speak, here in Guam. And when that transpired, there was always that emphasis and that focus, that in fact the judiciary is the third branch of government. And I think that one thing that, that certainly needs to be taken into consideration is to continue to find ways where in fact that third branch of, co-equal branch of government is given the autonomy and the independence in terms of making their appropriate decisions. And please don't read into any of my statements that in fact there's anything that is inappropriate at this point in time, because that is certainly not the intent of this legislation. I think that one of the comments that I'd like to highlight was a statement that was made by the good chairman, and I'd like to thank the chairman of the Finance Committee, certainly for moving on this legislation and having a public hearing and reporting it out of his committee. And one of the statements in the committee report that was stated by the good chairman was that the judiciary, and I hope I don't take it out of context, the statement was made, "The judiciary is a separate but co-equal branch of this government, and needs to be respected and treated as such, without having to rely on an allotment control of another branch. It is fundamental to assuring its independence." And that, with that statement, Madam Speaker, I ask and I request consideration on the part of members of this body to be able to support Bill Number 100 and get it through this legislative process. This is Massey, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Senator Panglinen, you are recognized.
See, this is Massey, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much for the opportunity to articulate some thoughts on Bill 100. First of all, I want to affirm my support for the bill, as I have always been, and probably more so than, and, and I'll go ahead and go like this and pat myself on the back, but more so than most in here, I've been at the forefront of protecting the judiciary and trying to affirm its position, first as a unified court of this territory, and secondly, as a co-equal branch of government. And when others were wheeling and dealing with regards to trying to unify the judiciary, you know, that they wanted this from the judiciary, and until they got it, they never supported a unified judiciary, I've always been very clear, open, and steadfast in my position and affirmation of that, both in back rooms, which I rarely go into, and on this legislative floor and out in the public. So if there's any doubt at this moment by any member of the judiciary, where I stand on the judiciary, both here and in the courtrooms, where I have defended the judiciary as a co-equal branch of government, where I have defended the Organic Act and the Constitution of the United States as it applies to Guam, in affirming a unified judiciary and ensuring that we have a coordinated branch and coordinated courts, I've been there, both in the trenches and in the benches of those courts, defending their right, and to a large degree, our right to make decisions that enhances the protection and the advancement of the judiciary branch of government. So I want to be very clear on that. Secondly, we've had this bill through the good authorship of the retiring speaker since last year, and our committee heard the bill, made some amendments to ensure that while we have branches of our government, we also have a tree with roots that go down, and we need to support all branches by having a healthy root system. And so while this bill, in the changes that we've made, recognizes the need to support that branch, it also does not imperil the support system of the roots of this government, and that is, of course, the other co-equal branches of this government. And we have found a methodology and a way in which this bill has been crafted, in its final version, to ensure that the root system remains healthy to support a healthy branch system of the judiciary. And I want to thank the retiring speaker for his support and his cooperation in working with our committee to try and fashion that. And I am satisfied that once again, in advancing this bill and in supporting this bill, I continue my long record of supporting an efficient, effective, coordinated court system, and an independent third branch of our government, to support our government as we move forward in the development of our island and our nation. Nation thinking about the future, nation of Guam, at some point in time. And we need that judiciary to set the record straight for us, to set the interpretations of the laws as envisioned by this body and enacted by the administration, so that when it comes time to implement laws of this territory that have been passed by this body, that we do have that healthy and independent branch still connected to the root system of a democratic government, but very, very clearly, a separate and co-equal system of government in this tree of our democracy. And so I want to thank, once again, like I said, the good author, and, you know, I was going to take the prerogative of chairmanship to add my name as a co-sponsor, but I don't have that prerogative, and that prerogative can be granted to me by our good and retiring author of the bill, and I am going to ask if he will graciously allow me to be added as a third, as a second co-sponsor after the primary sponsor of the bill, Senator Frank Ogden Jr. See, this is Massey, and I humbly indulge this request to your good graces. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. Are there any other speakers in the motion? I have Senator Palacios and then Senator Respechio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 100 manifests the continuing recognition, of course, of this body, by this body of the respect and support of the judiciary in the performance of their mandates. It is by understanding, Madam Speaker, that Bill 100 proposes simply that if there's going to be a shortfall in the funding, or in the collection, or in the disbursement of cash, that whatever is the calculated percentage in the shortfall be applied equally throughout the government of Guam. In this case, if there's an anticipated shortfall of 10%, that, that the judiciary will continue to receive then the 90%, as opposed to shorter than that. And there are times when I think the allotment is greater, I mean, is smaller than the anticipated shortage in cash disbursement. And so it's a simple bill, and I guess, again, it continues to preserve the integrity of the court. The court, Madam Speaker, cannot be placed in a situation where they have to come and lobby for additional funding, or, or rather, disbursement of cash, when there's already an appropriation adopted by this body. And so I rise in support of Bill 100, because it, it is what is needed, Madam Speaker, by the judiciary to continue their work, and to, to continue to be completely separate and, and independent of any other branch of government. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the motion, I recognize Senator Respechio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of this substituted version of Bill 100-30. You know, if the bill's intent is to express that the legislature wholeheartedly believes that the judicial branch of government is a separate but co-equal branch of government, and that we must, we must tweak the allotment process to make sure that they get what's exactly appropriated to them, I want to recognize both sponsor the bill, as well as the retiring speaker, who really rewrote this bill essentially, so that it does not, if passed and signed into law, it will not exacerbate the current cash flow problem that our governor of Guam is currently facing. You know, I, I think there should be no doubt in anybody's mind that this legislature has accorded the judicial branch of government with a lot of respect and courtesies. As you know, the law that requires the chief justice to deliver his State of the Judiciary Address before the legislature was repealed by a previous legislature, and although that's the case, you still, under our collective leadership, have welcomed them to present their plans and programs and report directly to the legislature, so that's really symbolic and a recognition that they should be treated and respected as a co-equal branch of government. My initial concern with this bill, Madam Speaker, and I'm, again, I'm happy that the substitute version would not exacerbate what we're going through right now in terms of cash flow, but if you recall, there was a previous legislature, there was a previous member that said, "Education is our top priority, and they should get 89%, 89.9% of the gross receipts taxes collected right off the top, give it to education, regardless of what their cash flow needs is at that time, and regardless of what the cash flow requirements are for the other departments and agencies." Well, I stood up and I voted against that provision, on the basis that if you did something like that, without any regard to the smaller agencies, or as the retiring speaker said, you want to take care of a branch, but you neglect the, the trees, and also the, the tree's roots and that whole root system, you know, Madam Speaker, I said that if you pass something like this, you certainly will create payless paydays for other departments and agencies. And sure enough, that's exactly what could have happened if not for the current governor, and if not for the current BBMR director to just ignore that provision of law. That provision of law that said, "Take 89% of the gross receipts tax and give it to the Guam Public School System," now as we know it, the Department of Education. Well, that provision was ignored, because we all know that the governor of Guam is the one who's mandated by the Organic Act to control the cash flow that's coming into this government of Guam, and to allocate these requirements appropriately. We also know that, that some agencies, Madam Speaker, are in a situation where they only have enough money, not allotment, but enough money appropriated to it, to take care of payroll. We know of other agencies, through their own cost-cutting and, and downsizing measures, could have a little bit more cushion than what their other department and agencies colleagues are experiencing. But my reasons for supporting this bill, Madam Speakers, is because I think we have to do a little different in terms of how we recognize the work that the various branches of government, even the departments and agencies, are doing by way of cost-cutting initiatives. We all know that during the budget cycle, we all hear of all these departments and agencies, particularly the judiciary in this case, we hear their struggles and, and what they've done to, to cost, to reduce the cash requirements in their agency, because their allotments have been reduced, we know what they're doing to streamline and all that. But then we also hear the sad story that your reward for cost-cutting is that your allotment release is a little bit lower than what you should have received. You know, that's, that seems to be the case, that the reward for saving taxpayer money is in the following budget, or through the allotment process, you get just exactly what you need in terms of payroll. And I think under our current leadership and appropriations chair, and our current move to have, move into performance-based budgeting, we will recognize those departments and agencies, and the other branches of government, that really want to defend those programs that are necessary to keep the core mandates and to move those mandates forward, rather than just appropriating what they got last year. If we continue to do what we've done, we will continue to get what we get. And so with Bill Number 100-30, I think it's really a good recognition, and it's not tied to, it's basically saying that the money coming in shall be appropriately, and, and deposit percentage calculation shall equal the total aggregate fiscal year appropriation of the judiciary's budget, divided by the aggregate of all estimated revenues of each revenue funding source of the judiciary budget for the same fiscal year. So this doesn't mean that you just take, you would, you, if, if not only 90% of the revenues are coming in for that particular quarter, Madam Speaker, then the court will get its, will get its share based on the revenue coming in, not based on its appropriation. And so I think this goes a long way to ensure that the governor and the BBMR director will still be responsible for the cash management of this government, and to prevent payless paydays for other departments and agencies. So I rise in full support of this bill.
Thank you very much, Senator Respechio. On the motion, are there any other speakers? There being none, I recognize the author to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, in line with one of the strong suggestions for the Chair of Finance, and first of all, let me also, once again, extend my appreciation, because the language that he had inserted in here addresses a couple of items. One is to clarify the original language of the, or the language of the original proposal. And secondly, it ensures that it does not, the finances of the entire government of Guam is not negatively impacted and beneficial to only one sector or one branch of the government. And I think that that had to be clearly stated here, and the amended language provides for that. Madam Speaker, I too would like to thank our colleagues who have spoken on this particular measure, just conceptually- Just conceptually, whatever percentage the judiciary of Guam's budget is, in comparison to the overall budget, the monthly allotment will be based on that percentage. So basically, if the revenues go up, then they will receive that percentage, not to exceed the allotment, the original allotment provided to the executive branch, the allotment schedule. And should the revenues decline slightly less, then they would also feel the pinch, so to speak. So it's not where it's favorable to one branch of the government and not taking into consideration the real financial and cash situation of our government. But in light of that, thank you again to the senators who have spoken, and I ask our colleagues for their consideration. And Madam Speaker, if I can close by requesting the consideration of our colleagues to place Mr. Speaker VC Panglinen as the second cosponsor of this particular proposal.
On that motion, are there any objections? No objections, or order?
This is Massey, Madam Speaker.
So I recognize the vice speaker on Bill Number 159-30.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Oh, one moment. Excuse me. I did call for the motion for that addition of another cosponsor, but on the motion to place then Bill 100 on the voting, the third reading file, without any objections. Vice Speaker, you recognize.
Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 159 COR in the third reading file, and ask for an opportunity to speak on this bill.
You may continue.
Madam Speaker, as many of you may or may not know, I spent a couple of months in the States as a hospice nurse for my mother who's been diagnosed with cancer. And every night, it was very difficult to watch TV, because on California TV, there was a commercial that ran several times a night. And the way the commercial ran, what the commercial was about, had this picture of the Grim Reaper walking down the street with the hood and the sickle, and the song in the background was playing was "Lullaby and Goodnight." And then the Grim Reaper would get into a car and was driving down the street, and the lullaby would continue to play. It would arrive at a big stadium, and the Grim Reaper would get out of the car, walk down into the stadium, go into the dressing room, and then the Grim Reaper would take off the cape and the hood. And underneath that was this absolutely beautiful woman in a midriff tight blouse, buxomie is all get out, carrying a tray of cigarettes. And then the commercial ran. It's time that we know exactly what the free cigarettes from the cigarette industry are about. And then it talks about the fact that these, the high cancer rate and the death rate throughout the country. When I came back to Guam after those two months in the States, I was watching the playoffs for the basketball. I know you may not have watched it, but some of us did. And one of the commercials that ran constantly, every single time that the playoffs ran for those two weeks, three weeks, there was a commercial that was made on Guam that was the most painful one to watch. And it was a commercial done by the Mumert family, Angie Mumert and her son. And it talked about the fact that Jimmy died of cancer last year at an age younger than both of us. And she describes the suffering that her husband went through, and the young son described how he himself had been addicted to cigarettes. But after watching the suffering that his father went through, swore to himself that he would stop, that he was going to stop smoking, did stop smoking, and will hope that no one ever, ever again experienced the suffering that he watched his father endure while his father died of cancer. Those two commercials juxtaposed in my mind and just made it imperative that, early last year, I introduced a Bill 159. And I asked, I want to thank the Committee on Rules for allowing it to come to the floor. It had been heard last year, but it kind of got lost in the shuffle with the cigarette tax increase. But it's imperative that we understand that there is a new fight that's out there. And the new fight that's out there is to try to get more young people addicted to cigarettes, I mean, to nicotine. And the way that they're doing it, my fellow colleagues, is the most insidious and insipid advertising scheme I have ever, ever seen. They've now devised a whole series of products that are candies, strips, and little things. They look like this. They look like Tic Tacs, and they look like the Listerine Breath Mints that wear that many of my shoes. And if you look at the second page of what I've handed out to you, they have gone so far as to even try to copy the logo of the Tic Tac logo, except that one goes to the right and the other one faces to the left. But in an effort to try to make people think that what they're carrying around is Tic Tacs, or make it look like they're Listerine Breath Mints, they've even devised, made the logo look the same. There is no reason this scroll-type thing has anything to do with a camel. If it had two humps, maybe. But that doesn't even look like a dramedary singular hump. It was designed for the specific purpose of being able to disguise itself as what it truly is, as a means of getting young people addicted to nicotine. And during the two months that I was with my mother, I noticed how difficult cigarette addiction, a nicotine addiction, was. Because I was constantly listening for her to, whenever she got up, I slept very lightly. And I could tell when it was midnight, because I was in my room, waiting for the six o'clock news on Guam to come on, so I could listen to see what was happening, or I was on my computer typing. And I could almost clockwork know when it was midnight, because I would hear the alarm go off, go off, and it would be my nephew, 28 years old, he's been smoking for a little over 10 years, going outside to smoke a cigarette, because he's not allowed to smoke in the house. Then I would listen to the news at one o'clock in the morning there, and start sending back my instructions to my office on what I needed to have done the next day. And I could almost tell when it was three o'clock, because again, I could hear the sliding glass door open, and at three o'clock in the morning, my nephew would go out for another cigarette. This addiction is awful, and I know he has spent a considerable amount of money for all the strips, I mean, the patch and everything else he's gone through, trying to therapy to try to get himself off this addiction. And I really dread the day when he's going to have to be the one that we take, I have to take care of, or his little sisters have to take care of, because of the fact that he's got cancer. But these strips, these candies, that are now being marketed, and unfortunately, this bill didn't get out, and I didn't get this out in time to stop the importation of the snooze that's already at some of the stores on the island, but it's a little packet where, rather than having, chewing tobacco, they have nicotine ground up in a little dissolvable packet, and you can stick it under your, or in front of your tongue, behind your lip like people do with snuff, and get your nicotine fix that way. That's already here, unfortunately. But fortunately, the orbs and the strips and the candy that you see in what I've handed out to us has not reached our shores yet. And I would like us, as a legislature, to take a stand and prohibit the importation of these things, because of the fact that it is, it's going to be sold out in front. Those of you that smoked and were able to get off with a patchish, you had to go to your pharmacy and get it, because it was prescribed? For those of you that got it, that were able to get it at public health or at mental health, there are ways to be able to get that. But they showed pictures in the news in the States and here, I mean, on the news, that these things were in the candy cases. Though we have no smoking in the schools, the kids are going to be able to come into any junior high school or any senior high school and have in their pocket something we think are Tic Tacs, but they're actually orbs. And throughout class, they can be dropping a couple of these, and you can see from the flyer that I gave you how much nicotine is in each one of the orbs, and how long the nicotine fix is for. Or you might think that they're clearing their breath, but actually, what they're doing is sticking a strip of nicotine on their tongue. Now, I understand that there are some people that are addicted and need the assistance of finding some way of being able to come off their addiction. Come off their addiction. But my concern are the young people. I know, I was at a rally the other day, and I watched a little boy start asking for some gum, because he noticed an adult was offering me some gum. And I've seen it other times, when many of you, and I'm sure you've seen it, where a little kid sees you take the Tic Tacs out and wants a Tic Tac. Those orbs, you can see from the picture, look almost exactly the same. It's even worse, because it almost looks like it's chocolate. And maybe many of you, many people don't realize it, but you've seen parents where their children have gotten into their purses and gotten some candy out? Or they start wailing, because they want some candy, and somebody gives it to them, and accidentally gives them some orbs? Yes, the articles that I gave you have stories about the poisoning that some babies will have. I'm hoping that enough people are going to be sensible enough not to give it to children. But my concern is the fact that what we're going to be doing is we're going to get a whole new generation of young people addicted to cigarettes, because of the fact that we provide them with little tiny little things that's going to get them addicted to nicotine. And nicotine addiction on this island, according to the commercial that was, that I watched the Mumert family put on, every month, five families on this island get told that a loved one has cancer from their cigarette smoking. And every month on this island, three families will lose a loved one as a result of that Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues, I understand that issues of choice and giving different kinds of things, but if these little candies contained THC, or these candies contained ice, or these candies contained cocaine, or heroin, we would stop it. This addiction to nicotine is just as insipid, and it kills people. We have to, as a legislature, take a stand and stop the importation of these before they come in, and we lose a whole other generation of young people to smoking. I don't need to tell you about how much time is lost, even in this legislative hall. How many of our employees spend a good amount of time in the back smoking? I caught part back there, I see it. And trying to get off the addiction is very difficult. We cannot and should not allow this problem to go to another generation by allowing these products onto this island, to be sold here, and lose another generation of young people. And not only lose a generation, and I know I shouldn't put money to it, but the cost, the healthcare cost are astronomical. And so, I ask my colleagues to please, this is a very simple bill, it just says, "These products with these grilled, this milled nicotine content cannot and will not be imported and sold on this island." Because we, the people of Guam, have decided that we're not going to allow the cigarette companies to addict another one or two of our generations, so they can continue to reap the benefits off our children and deprive us of them having a full life. I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak, and I understand that you'd like to be the second cosponsor, and I, if there's no objection by the members, I'd like to add you as the second cosponsor on this bill. And I see that the chairman of the Health Committee that heard the bill would like to be the third cosponsor, so if there's no objection to the two of you being added, I would like to make that motion at this time. But I ask my colleagues for support in this bill. It's important for, I don't have any children, but I can tell you, every time when I leave here at 3:30 and I go pick up my niece at Bishop, and I drive around the corner, I just want to cry or scream, or drive the car. If I didn't have my niece in my car, I'd probably drive into one of those stores right there with my car, because I see the little kids outside, and I know the color of the uniform, that it's a junior high school uniform, and they're out there smoking. Madam Speaker, for the health of our children, we, as a legislature, have to unanimously pass Bill 159, and I ask for the support of my colleagues. Thank you.
To add two additional cosponsors, without any objections, so order. On the list, I have Senator Ogden, and then Senator Tituri to speak on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand certainly in full support of this particular measure. You know, when I look at some of the testimony that was submitted during the course of the public hearing, it's kind of interesting to look directly at statistics. We just recently entertained legislation that addressed that tobacco fees, or taxes, so to speak, in terms of its impact on the Healthy Futures Fund and on our community, and the allocation of those resources. If we can recall distinctly during the course of that discussion, Madam Speaker, it was highlighted that Guam's percentage of smokers was almost double the national average. That, I think, already tells a story about the challenges that our island faces in regards to cigarette or tobacco use. Some people have come up to me and said, you know, it's a personal decision. What I do with my own resources and how I live my lifestyle, that's absolutely correct. But when you take it a step further, and you look at some of the cancer research that have taken place over the course of the last three to four years, up at the University of Guam, as well as the impact that we see on many family members on a daily basis, Madam Speaker, I think it highlights the health component of why that decision was made at that point in time. Well, I wanted to also just read off some general statements and statistics. Perhaps it's applicable nationwide, but if you transpose it to Guam and our community here, and knowing full well that the average, the percentage of smokers or users of tobacco products on Guam is almost double the national average, I think that we can probably try to transpose some of those numbers locally. But here's a testimony that was, or an extract of a testimony... But here's a testimony that was, or an extract of a testimony that was provided by representatives from the Department of Public Health and Social Services. And as you know, Madam Speaker, that the department has successfully, over many years, acquired federal funds to be able to try to offset any additional or unnecessary use of tobacco products amongst our youth. And that has been a tremendous focus of this agency, and I commend them for their continued efforts. Here's a statement from, a piece of the statement from the public hearing, and it reads, "This legislation is significant for the appeal of flavored cigarettes or tobacco products. For, for the, the appeal of flavored cigarettes or tobacco products has long been associated with young and novice smokers. Tobacco, tobacco industry research has demonstrated that fruit and candy flavored tobacco products increase the social acceptance of cigarettes, increase the excitement factor, for example, sharing flavors, and increase the curiosity to try the product. These products should not be considered safe because they are harmful and extremely addictive." It goes on to say, to read, "Flavored regular cigarettes promote youth initiation and help young occasional smokers to become daily smokers. These products might encourage children, teens and young adults to take their first step towards smoking cigarettes. Young people may be attracted to these products due to their novelty, safe claims, and the availability of these products in a variety of fruit, candy, cola, and chocolate flavors. In addition, these products may be easily assessed, accessed online, in stores, and at mall kiosks where young people often hang out." Just a couple of statistics, Madam Speaker, if I can share with the members of this body. And like I said, this may be statistics that was compiled by the Centers for Disease Control, but if you transpose it to the local numbers, on a, even on a conservative basis, I think it says much about the impact of tobacco use here on our island. It reads, "Among youth aged 12 to 17 in 2007, 3.1 million or 12.4% used a tobacco product in the past, in the previous month. 2.5 million, 9.8%, used cigarettes, and 1.1 million, 4.2% used cigars." This is youth, Madam Speaker, nationwide between the ages of 12 and 17 in 2007. Part of that particular statement also reads, "In 2007, 59.7% of new smokers were under age 18." Let me read that again, Madam Speaker. In 2007, 59.7% of new smokers were under the age 18. Approximately 6,100 new cigarette smokers began every day, or a total of 2.2 million persons aged 12 or, or older. Although significantly lower than the 2006 estimate of 2.4 million, this was significantly higher than the estimates of 1.9 million for 2002 and 2 million for 2003. And let me also read some additional excerpts from this same report. Youth Tobacco Issues. The greatest hurdle to reducing tobacco use among youth is that tobacco industry's continued creation and promotion of products that have strong appeal to youth and the industry's use of deceptive marketing practices. And then finally, Madam Speaker, flavor and product modifications not only make the product more appealing to kids, but often produce additional carcinogens, and manipulation of nicotine and other chemicals increases addictiveness and harm, and misleading claims discourage smokers from quitting and thus cost countless lives. That's directly, Madam Speaker, from a report from the Centers of Disease Control in regards to youth, the impact on youth nationwide. And like I shared with you, although this is not reflective of Guam's youth population, I think that just by virtue of taking those numbers and transposing them to our island community, perhaps it's stretching it a little, but when you, you look at the overall figure of the number of smokers and the percentage of smokers here on our island, like I shared a little earlier, where it's almost double the national average, I think we can pretty much transpose those figures. So why would we, why would I want to see this proposal endorsed by the members of this body? I think it, it goes towards the right spectrum of the healthy lifestyle component. You know, Madam Speaker, it's all about saving lives. And I think that, yes, there are personal discrepancies in terms of what decisions people make and how they proceed with the items that they purchase, and I respect that. But when many of our people have to go through our public health facilities, inclusive of Guam Memorial Hospital, and have to be treated there for preventable diseases, which is one of the, the areas where cancers, some cancer is, are considered and fall directly in that category of preventable diseases, I think that this initiative and this legislation would also move in that direction of trying to prevent many of our youth members and members of this community from unnecessarily getting addicted to tobacco products eventually as a result of taking some of these products that this legislation would otherwise prohibit. So I stand in support of this legislation and I thank the good sponsor for adding yours truly as, as the third co-sponsor. This is bossy, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the motion to recognize Senator Tytegui.
Any objections? No objections, Madam Speaker? It was a motion to accept me to come speak up, there's no objection?
No, I thought you raised your hand because you wanted to speak.
Yes, I did.
Okay. So you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, um, I do commend the last two speakers talking about the addiction of, of nicotine. And I truly believe that, um, there has been a big change, a great change, in fact, where certain places have been banned from smoking to, for individuals to, you know, think about it twice before they light up a cigarette, especially our youth. And we're starting to see that work already. The smokers now, the youth, the numbers have declined considerably through outreach programs, educating students on the effects smoking has, and it's doing its purpose. Now, what, what do we tell our children about the freedom of choice? It's beginning to look like we are in a situation where we're going to dictate, this legislature keeps bringing forth individual choices. That's just it, individual choices? No, we're not. We're not able to choose anymore. Is that what we're going to continue to do through this legislation? Take away choices that we have for ourselves? Next thing you know, we're going to stop anything at all that's going to cause cancer. So why don't we start with, let's say, Diet Coke? It's leading to cancer too as well. Enough of that stuff, you'll end up having cancer, that's what I'm told. But one thing's for sure that I was also told, that nicotine does not cause cancer. It's the tar and the smoke that causes cancer. The addiction, however, is true. But how many of us here are addicted to coffee? Are we going to ban that one next because of caffeine? Madam Speaker, it's one thing to tell the people the effects of a certain drug, a certain product out there that causes cancer or causes, um, the inability to walk straight, to move straight, to operate an automobile. But it gives us the freedom, the freedom of choice to decide on that. And we keep taking that away from our people. Does this legislation also take away the fact that some of these individuals are trying to quit smoking? And the product in that is Nicorette gum? Now, are we going to stop that? Because far as I'm concerned, there is tobacco, there is nicotine in tobacco, so that too is banned from being brought onto this island. Did anybody think about that? You're talking about nicotine, it's in cigarettes. So let's ban cigarettes as well. I know many people are trying very, very hard to kick, to kick the habit of smoking cigarettes. And they do this through this Nic- uh, nicotine gum and some of these strips to help curb the craving in hopes that they can gradually, like any addiction, gradually go down. From one pack to half a pack, to two cigarettes a day to maybe one, gradually. And some of these products help them do that. So you're taking away the ability for these people to try and kick a habit that causes cancer, which is smoking, smoking into the lungs and tar. That causes cancer. Not nicotine. It causes other ailments. It sure does, hypertension. But cancer? Ask anybody on the street, everything causes cancer. So are we going to go down the list and dictate to the people what they can and cannot do? You're taking away a choice for them to quit smoking, and that is through this mechanism right here. How many people smoke in your fam- in your fa- uh, family, Madam Speaker? Are you going to give them the opportu- you're not going to give them the opportunity to find a way to quit smoking? Now, I understand the intention of trying to have a better society and, uh, being able to, uh, has, have designated areas for individuals that don't have to deal with the smoke. And I agree, and it's helping. It's helping those individuals. But now we're treating people who are trying to stop an addiction like there's really something wrong with them. Give an avenue for them to help them to quit smoking, and this is one of the ways to do it. We can't keep making the choices for the people of Guam. Responsible choices. Kids who are 18, they can't buy cigarettes. Now, whether they do or not and go under the table and take it from somebody else's purse or what, what are we going to do next? Cut off their hands? What kind of country are we? What are we starting to do? Dictate? Do not take away the one thing these individuals who know they have a problem with, and that's smoking. The avenue in which they can try and quit. Give them that choice. Let's not stop putting legislation that's going to make choices for them. They're responsible people, let's, let's give them that respect, that we are responsible people to make our own choices. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tytegui. Uh, I noticed that Speaker Wampet wishes to speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, I rise in, in support of the bill, Bill 159, and to show within my support, overwhelming support, I've also asked if I could be the second co-sponsor. Mr. Speaker, I'm speaking from the perspective of not just a mother, and yes, I do have a son who actually smokes. I don't smoke, my two girls don't smoke either, but I'm also speaking from their perspective as an educator. I was a school principal in the middle school level, where those particular ages are so impressionable. What concerns me primarily is the introduction, with this introduction of another form, again, to attract our youth, our children. Our children are so innocent, they watch the behaviors of their parents, they watch the backs of their parents and begin to model their parents and other adults, you know, that are influential in their lives. And although, yes, there's that factor of saying and wanting to give every individual that choice, but with the children, they don't know much better. And the parents, yes, may unintentionally leave some of these products on the kitchen table, the coffee table in the living room, in their purses. And I've seen many times, especially out in public, where if there's a crying child or a misbehaving child, what is the first thing that normally parents would do? You know, are they, first of all, trying to ask them to behave, sometimes maybe even threatening them? And most of the time, what I've seen is they would give them something to keep them quiet, and it's in the form of gum or candy. And how many of us have gone to the grocery stores and see the children cry and have a tantrum because they want a certain candy or a gum in the store other than a toy? So these cigarette companies, to be able to combat a nationwide move for smoke-free areas, smoke-free around restaurants, smoke-free around public buildings, smoke-free around schools. So their way then to get around this is that by not having cigarettes, then of course, was to be very creative. Creative enough then to be able to design these, not just flavored cigarettes, flavored cigarettes are always geared to then promote or the youth, to get them started on smoking. Because once you, you, you get the youth addicted to cigarette smoking, they're addicted for the rest of their lives. And I know how hard it is to try to get out of it because I've seen my son struggle every once in a while. He would stop and then he would start again, and then he would stop and he would start again. So yes, I've seen him suffer, I've seen him struggle, and I'm, I see him wanting so much to quit for the sake of his son, but he's having a very difficult time, and I understand that. And I understand his choice as well. But the mere fact is, is that he's addicted to nicotine. I know I'll be dating myself when I, when I tell you that one of the things that I noticed as a young child too, because like I said, is that we watch other adults around us and we see them smoking, and we always think that, and they used to use these commercials of beautiful women and handsome men, uh, commercials, you know, smoking, and everybody wants to be like them. So then now, one of the ingenious creation of these companies was bubble gums in the shape of cigarettes. And as young as I could remember when that was out in the 60s and 70s, all of my classmates and I joined them as well, pretending that we were so cool, smoking that bubble gum, that bubble gum shaped cigarette. Because we just all thought it was the greatest thing, the coolest thing, and we're going to be really popular and that maybe boys will recognize us, you see, if we smoke cigarettes as well. So now we've created, these companies have created other things that are, yes, something that almost every adult, I'm sure, would have in their pockets or in their purses, and that would be the little pack of Tic Tac. And then adults are starting now, the greatest thing is if you can't get a hold of gum, you get one of these strips so that you make sure that before you speak to somebody, your breath will smell, you know, fresh. But then now they're going to have, they have nicotine in it as well, and that in itself is addicting. So you've got, you started out with the, um, cigarette shape, bubble gums, you have the Tic Tac candies, you have the strips, you have, believe it or not, they're even in toothpaste and drinks. So these companies then will do whatever they can because it is a matter of making mon- because it is a matter of making money. And they know that nicotine is a goldmine. Because once you get people addicted, you've hooked them for life. I support this bill, Mr. Speaker. Because I think that our children are not at that age yet where, yes, they can make the choices. As adults, you will make your choices to what you want to do, whether you want to smoke or not, whether you want to drink or not. And that's the choice of the adults. But we know that for the children, they're going to need some guidance. And the guidance, we always would hope, would come from the parents. And then there are those, of course, like I said, the unintentional accidents of leaving these items behind for the children to be able then to reach and take and consume. So it is our responsibility then, as policymakers for Ireland, is to try to protect our children. And I know we can't protect them forever, but we definitely must make an attempt to protect them and to educate, not just them, but to educate the parents. Because I'm sure that there are parents who would not intentionally want their children to be able to access these items. Because I understand if the parent is trying to also wean themselves off from cigarette smoking, wean themselves from nicotine, that they too are struggling. But sometimes in that effort, their children then will become addicted. I was reading the committee report and didn't realize, Mr. Speaker, that when reading the report, the unintended, again, consequences of children consuming any one of these items. And by consuming these items, it actually is considered poison or toxin to these individuals. To the point that they would literally, physically suffer as a result of consuming these candies or these strips. And to me, that is unconscionable. When children are going to have to suffer because of the recklessness of adults. So, Mr. Speaker, I stand in support of this bill. And like I said earlier, so much so that I wanted to be the second co-sponsor. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I see Senator Palacios, then Senator Rispicio, then Senator Guthertz.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 159. All of these products, Mr. Speaker, the camel orbits, camel sticks, camel strips, all of these products, Mr. Speaker, are laced with nicotine. Nicotine addiction, Mr. Speaker, develops slowly and it develops much issue with the youth. Governments throughout this country continue to be vigilant in the harms and ills that nicotine addiction breeds in our community. It is a continuing fight in our communities throughout this nation, Madam Speaker. We, as elected officials, are capable of calculating what is good for our youth. Bill 159, Madam Speaker, accurately calculated that banning nicotine-laced products such as what is proposed here today is a good bill. But, Madam Speaker, the argument that why should we decide and sort of interfere with the right of choice of youth? If we were to follow that logic, Madam Speaker, then there would be probably no law passed. Why? Because every law that we pass, you have to stop there, do not speed, actually interfere to some extent with freedom of choice. But that freedom of choice, Madam Speaker, has to be balanced with community safety, with community interest. And it is with that thought that this body and all legislative bodies throughout this nation consider and then make a decision as to what is best overall for the community. There are other choices of candies, in this case, in this particular matter. And so, I do not believe that that is a significant interference, if you wanna, if some, if anyone would wanna look at that. We are elected to do this, to deal with these issues. Issues that are hard, issues that are very substantial. And that is why we're here today. And I'm prepared, of course, to cast my vote in favor of Bill 159 today, Madam Speaker. Bill 159 is a good bill. Again, the point to stop the nicotine addiction is at the early age of our youth. And with candies, it is very significant. Because it will start gradually and then it will develop into a full-fledged addiction where many, many people would not be able to kick the habit. I rise in support, and I ask my colleagues, of course, to support Bill 159. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the motion, I recognize Senator Rispicio and then Senator Guthertz.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my last seven and a half years as being a member of legislature and obviously previous legislatures, it's very rare that I look at a piece of legislation and it's very rare that I need a little bit more time to think about exactly how I would vote on such measure. This is one of those instances, Madam Speaker, where it's not really black or white. There's a lot of gray matter. And I do rise to express some concerns with what this bill is attempting to do. I'm also going to say that it's very rare that I would rise and express concerns on a bill that these good senators co-sponsored, yourself, the Vice Speaker, and our Chairman on Health, and many other senators who might want to co-sponsor this bill. It's very rare, Madam Speaker, but what's also rare is I'm proud to be part of a legislature that's not afraid to bring these kinds of issues to the forefront of the community so we can have a debate. And the elected representatives can have a debate on such measures. I rise to express some concern with this bill because I understand what this bill is attempting to do. I understand that we want to prevent minors from accessing these kinds of products because of the nicotine involved or injected into these products. But minors already, Madam Speaker, should be prohibited, are prohibited by law from being able to smoke tobacco or any of these products to begin with. Again, the issue speaks to enforcement rather than creating more prohibitions. My biggest concern is that if we prohibit these kinds of products which are perfectly legal right now and we make them illegal, you're going to see a creation of an underground market. Are then people who would be distributors now be illegal drug dealers? Is that what we're trying to do, create another category of products that are currently legal? Make it illegal and make it the scoff law where it's difficult to enforce? Madam Speaker, my issue with this bill is that there's no doubt that we want people and we should do what we can to prevent people from smoking. Isn't the issue of smoking, Madam Speaker, secondhand smoke? Isn't the issue the very concern that you raised? I know you have a lot of love for your son and want him to quit smoking because that smoke is being exposed to your beautiful grandchild. And I know that, I'm a father myself. And I do whatever I can to prevent my son from being exposed to secondhand smoke. And if you look at the national debate and the debate on smokers' rights versus an individual who's supposed to smoke, who's exposed to smoke, how about that individual's right to breathe clean air? So I thought that was where the debate is at and that's how the debate should be framed, the secondhand smoke. And so if you look at what this legislature has done to prevent, or previous legislature, I think, to prevent and the sponsor of this bill actually, to prevent people from smoking inside restaurants. And what that, and who that act was named after was named after a young girl who had cancer, who unfortunately and very sadly passed away because she was exposed to secondhand smoke, and that was the argument at the time. So now, we can't go into restaurants and we will never be exposed to people who smoke because we have a right to clean air. And then you have this legislature again, which I supported, moving to raise the tobacco taxes to prevent people from smoking. You know, I supported that because nationwide, that's a means to generate more money. Hopefully, ultimately, to curtail people's need to smoke and become addicted to nicotine. That's one mechanism to prevent their smoking is you outprice that product. And then you tax that product so then you can create programs that will provide positive, healthy alternatives for other people. But the reason why, Madam Speaker, I rise to ask our colleagues to consider what we're actually doing here is I believe that we might be taking away some therapeutic mechanisms for people who want to quit smoking. We might be taking, as the previous speaker said, there's Nicorette gum. You know, if we're going to be magnanimous and say that nicotine is bad, then why doesn't this bill go all the way? And why doesn't this bill ban Nicorette gum? Or any nicotine product for that matter? Why doesn't this bill go against what the United States government is doing? And why doesn't this bill just ban tobacco in its entirety? You can't be half-pregnant, Madam Speaker. If the issue is nicotine is bad, then the issue, then this bill should reflect that kind of sentiment. But my concern with the smoking is, is I understand, we all understand that the smoke itself and the tar in the lungs, that's the carcinogen. And when people are exposed to that, that's how secondhand smoke affects some innocent bystander. Then you, and then you take a look at this bill and all the arguments that have been put forth on this bill, they're all valid, valuable. They're all valid, they're all appropriate. But there's also another side of this equation where these could be products that would actually be available to people who want to quit smoking. And these are products that do not go against what we're doing locally and what we're doing nationally to prevent people from secondhand smoke. And so I rise to express concern for this bill. I'm going to spend as much time to think about my position on this bill. But it's very clear that I raise a lot of concerns and a lot of objections. And I know about, you know, now, Madam Speaker, I learned that there's this vaporizer that people can put nicotine drops and it's smokeless. And these are what smokers use to get through a very long fight on the plane. You know, I want to, for the record, say that nicotine is absolutely bad. Smoke is absolutely bad. That's a behavior that should be stopped. But I don't think that's a behavior that should be stopped by any form of legislation. I've always taken the position that you can't legislate morality. And we can't be the parents for people who should otherwise be parents to their children. And we already have laws in place to safeguard minors or to prevent minors from buying cigarettes, from smoking cigarettes. And we have laws in place to prevent innocent bystanders such as you, such as me, such as many other non-smokers from being exposed to smoke. I'm just concerned that we create yet another prohibition, allow these products to go, to be imported illegally, turn distributors into drug dealers, and then have the, you know, just create a whole underground market for people who need the nicotine but do not, you know, are not able to, or who not, don't want to smoke because of various situations or because they just don't like the smell of smoke on them. And this may be an alternative to help them ease that addiction. And so I just, I'm just concerned that this would create another prohibition and it would create, it would probably seek to have more problems raised than we're actually trying to resolve. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to expressing my concern on this bill. I will continue to speak with the author and not going to discourage him from not moving forward. That's the beauty about this democracy and that's the beauty of our legislative process through our collective leadership, Madam Speakers. We don't prevent bills from coming onto the floor. But likewise, we also don't prevent any member from rising to express some concerns I have. I have no amendment for this bill, just a lot of heartache. And I rise to express those heartaches with you and our colleagues. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispicio. Senator Guthertz on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, if you go on the internet, you're gonna find many jurisdictions in the United States have already banned this material because of the hazards it poses to young people. And if you have family members and one of your family members, a child, a young person who's not supposed to have access to any of this, comes home with some of this stuff in their backpack and you're a parent, how are you gonna react to that? This stuff is flooding our island. And it should be banned. If you go on the internet, you're gonna find out there are candy cigarette packs now being made with nicotine content. It's look like cigarette packaging. Now, our friends in the United States mainland who are policymakers and state legislatures and municipal councils must know something that we don't because they've taken the initiative to ban these products in their jurisdiction. Madam Speaker, all I want to do is ask my colleagues to get on the internet and spend a couple hours and research this. And you will find that there's a definite legitimate reason to support this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthertz. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? Senator Panglinian, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in an attempt here to articulate what goes through my mind personally with issues facing us and debated on this floor so that the public can understand what the thinking process that occurs so that they can make judgments on my actions in here and whether or not they agree with those. Maybe they may not agree with the final decision, but they at least, and I want them to know that like many of my colleagues here, many things are considered in getting to that final decision. And, you know, it's not easy to just say, you know what, we're gonna cure this problem by making it illegal and close our borders to nicotine in this form. Because that speaks to that sometimes what people refer to as the slippery slope. Once you start moving down that slope of making things and putting into place laws that disagree with you either from a personal constitution or even from a professional constitution, then where do you stop? And because we're saying, we are willing, or I personally am willing to go this far in limiting a liberty or a right that when it's something that I don't agree with, like freedom of speech, am I willing to now say, okay, I'm gonna go a little bit further than yelling fire in a crowded theater? Or take a look at what the Supreme Court's doing now with regards to gun laws? I mean, two things, if used correctly, will kill you. One is cigarettes. If you follow the directions in the old days of, from your friends as well as TV of, first you strike a match, you put that thing here in your mouth, you put it up against the you strike a match, you put that thing here in your mouth, you put it up against tobacco, you inhale deeply, and then you keep it in your lungs as long as you can, and then you exhale. And that's how you properly smoke a cigarette. And if you're really good, then you can blow the smoke up your, out your nose, which, ma'am, we used to try to do that. Or you blow smoke rings and can you get one smoke ring to intersect into another smoke ring before it dissipates? I mean, it used to be a sport almost until we found out what it did to our bodies and why we couldn't stop. And so, do we, cigarettes, so back to this, cigarettes one, if used properly, it will kill you. Guns, if you take a gun and you aim it correctly and you pull the trigger against a live person or animal, they will die. Used correctly, it will achieve its purpose. But those are the only two, really. And it doesn't matter whether somebody's coming to attack you, you still got to use the gun correctly. You can't shoot and miss and, and kill the other guy. You got to hit them. So tobacco and nicotine, which is the addictive element of, or chemical in that tobacco, if used properly, will addict you for life and eventually kill you before you're supposed to die unless you, you know, just say, that's, that's God's wish that I die of cancer. No, because he gave us that free will also. So to prevent a new generation of addicted young people, generation of addicted citizens on Guam, that will be made easier by the importation of this product in the form and fashion that is being proposed at this bill, is that the way to do it? Is it just, you know, is it, are we trying to do what's just convenient or what's right? And when the two don't intersect in that same plane, then where do you go? Do you do what is convenient and right or do you do just what is right? And that is, I hate to say it, maybe greater laws into regulation on the dispensment of this product, the display of this product, the access to this product, under the same kind of regulation and control that we have for tobacco. It's got to be behind the counter, you got to be carded, the whole thing with regards to the dispensing of these forms of nicotine that are no longer in the form of a tobacco product. So is nicotine, you know, and, and is that what we want to do? Do we want to make the enforcement of this banning of this product the most convenient way is you just can't bring it to the borders and we're going to stop it because of its effect later on? And I understand most, you know, having worked in the public relations field, the advertising field and, and in some previous capacities, both as a, as a member of a large corporation as well as a member of an entrepreneurial team where we did some public relations and advertising, that it takes, you know, when a company spends more money on the public relations and advertising for a product than it takes to manufacture that product, then something's wrong. Then you know that the limited resources that governments and communities have to combat that huge gap in resources, then you, you may need to do something drastic such as, you know what, we're not going to have enough educational money, we're not going to have enough dedicated citizens to battle the public relations dollars that will flow into our community by the manufacturers of these products, by the distributors of these products, by the support given to the distributor, to the retailers, by the distributors of these products, that no matter what we do, it will be a losing battle because we just don't have the resources. No government, no community has enough resources to battle the billions and billions and billions of dollars spent by these corporations to push their product in so many different ways that it becomes part of our being to respond to it. You know? So take a look at what arsenal we have in our capacities as a community and as lawmakers in this community to stem this tide of bringing in these kind of products to our community. And is that unfairness inherent in resources? Is that when we go this far of limiting the exposure of our citizens to these products in this fashion, marketed in this way, by just saying, we just won't allow it to come into our community because we can't regulate it once it gets here? There's not enough resources. Is that going down that slippery slope? Or is it really standing firm on that edge of that cliff and say, we're not going over it? We're not going to allow any more of our children to fall off that cliff and go over that cliff with regards to their public health? You know, Madam Speaker, you and I sat through the, and Senator Ada, Tony Ada, through all the hearings on the schools. And one of the questions that, you know, always kind of brings a smile to my face is, what is your policy on second servings for, in the school cafeteria? And we got many different answers. But one of the answers that we got, and we heard a little bit more often towards the end was, due to the nutritional guidelines established by our dietitian and the Food and Drug Administration as to what is a healthy serving that meets all the daily requirements of food and of vitamins for our children, that we give them that in our first serving. And in order to combat child obesity, we don't allow second servings. You know, and it, you know, it's like, you mean, you can say no to somebody, to this beautiful young child who may not be obese and doesn't look obese or not even on the way to obese and say, you can't have any more food because that will exceed your allowable vitamin and that will harm your health rather than help your health? And principals do it, cafeteria staff do it, and they explain it to the kids. And are we punishing our kids? Are we saying, are we taking away their freedom to a second helping? Or are we doing what is right for them in the long run? And when we say we're trying to ensure that our community doesn't infringe on our freedom of choice and rights, you know, what are we protecting? Who are we protecting? Whose rights are we protecting? And to what end are we hoping to achieve in protecting their right to freedom of choice? Do they have a right to be addicted to nicotine? Does a three-year-old know that right? Does a seven-year-old know that right? Does a 13-year-old know that right? And the responsibility that comes with that right to be addicted to nicotine so I can smoke for the rest of my life? Is that a slippery slope? Or is that good public policy? Is that good community policy? That we're not going to tolerate this billions of public relations resources available to these corporations when we don't have the resources? Both from a monetary point of view as well from, as from a human capital point of view? Well, we just don't have enough people that are good-hearted and good-natured to want to go out there and continually explain the evils of smoking? And that these products, once they are on island, may filter out into the community and we have no way of combating it? Once you get addicted. It's an addiction, as everybody admits. I think there's no, no longer any debate by either side of supporters or non-supporters, whether they come from a freedom of choice or a health choice. The freedom of choice, people do not dispute that it's an addiction. The health people do not dispute that it's an addiction. So do we expose this opportunity for addiction to nicotine, which, again, neither side argues on the negative health, health effects and the long-term debilitating effects, if not death at an early stage, on being addicted to nicotine and tobacco and partaking in that habit? There's no more arguments on these issues. It's just now, do you have a right to that? Do you have a right that when you do so and you don't provide the resources to take care of yourself and the burden falls on this community to take care of you? Is that a right that you should have unfeathered, unabridged, unencumbered, unimpeded, a total right to become a burden to this community if you don't have the resources? As a public health ward of this community? I mean, these are all the things that come about in the discussion of something as simple or what appears to be as simple as we shouldn't import these type of products anymore. It never is that simple. But you can always keep it simple in terms of the decision that you're going to make. And, and once we, do we keep it simple, such as this issue? Or do we need to inconvenience ourselves a little bit more to ensure that all of these arguments that we're presenting get considered? And get accommodated, if you want to, if you want to put that word in there, it's not a bad word, get accommodated for the sake of this greater policy as a community with regards to some of the peripheral and tangential issues that come about in making this simple decision? The rights of our community and the rights of our citizens? And where does that right, from a personal basis, interfere with the right of the community to have the regulations needed to protect its citizens in the eyes of those of us that are in here that have been given the opportunity and the responsibility to make those decisions? So if you don't know how I'm going to vote after all that long speech, then probably neither do I. But I do want to say that at least you know how I think and what I think about in arriving at these decisions. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for that opportunity to present to the public here as well as my colleagues, some of the very, as somebody mentioned it, you know, emotional as well as hard and, and not easy decisions that we have to face on things that looks like slam dunks as, as we see are now normal part of a basketball game where they shouldn't ever. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. On the motion, I'd like to recognize the author to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. First, I'd like to thank Speaker Panglinen for that very dispassionate and intellectual discussion on the thought process that really should go through. I probably should sit down at this point because many of you know how intemperate I can sometimes get in responding to some of the arguments. But I really want to just say, this bill was specifically crafted with these specific items. It was not intended, it was never intended to address the prescription items that are needed or wanted by people who want to stop their addiction. And to claim that this bill should be thrown out or not passed because of the fact that it's, it doesn't include Nicorette or the strips is disingenuous. These are specific, the definitions are there, each one of the items that I'm attempting to address are in the legislation. And it's not that I'm trying to prevent people from using it as a, as an aid in their coming off their addiction. I appreciate that. My concern is, is that because of the way that it is designed, it's not a strip that you put on your shoulder, it's not something that you get from a prescription or at a drugstore, it's something you get in the candy shelf at the store. And this argument that it is the smoke that causes cancer, it's the addiction to nicotine that causes the smoking. And it's starting them on their addiction to nicotine by giving them these strips, these orbs, these candies, that starts them on that long road down, that addictive route that many of them can't turn back on until we bury them. And yes, we as policymakers have to make a decision on where that line is drawn. To say we shouldn't draw lines, we should close up shop. As Senator Paul George put it, we have to, as a policymaker, decide that if we're going to live together in this community, there are certain things that we can and cannot do. To get home, I shouldn't be able to drive 90 miles an hour just because I want to get home. For safety reasons, it's 30 or 35 in some areas. But why? With some of the arguments that we meet today, never mind. Let's go 90, let's go 100. We had to be, as policymakers, to make some very difficult decisions. And I'm sorry that I'm the one that's bringing up these difficult decisions that we have to make, but there are difficult decisions that we have to make. Because as the last speaker put it, if each one of us was independently wealthy and could pay for our hospital needs when we have to undergo all those, the, the treatment for it, for whether or not it's some kind of a cancer? I have a folder in my office of all the requests for medical fundraisers, for people going off for, for various things of, of diseases that they could have prevented. And some of it is cancer, cancer of the lung, emphysema. And I've seen some of them pulling their tanks with them and smoking, on the other hand. And I know you, many of you have seen it also. We have to assist them. The adults are going to have to make their own decision. My concern, Madam Speaker, with the fact that these insipid producers of, of these products have designed it specifically to attract young people, children, teenagers, so they can start smoking and continue to pay it, bring them major profits in the years to come. They'll start these things out at lost leader prices. I noticed when snooze came in the other, last month, it's $2.99 for a pack. Because the cigarette tax that we passed didn't address this very, the very issue of the snooze itself, it, it gets away with it. But for a while, and then they'll, they'll jack it up. Once, once you're addicted to it. And I sent all of you the email while I was away of the 60 Minute Show on, on snooze. Of how the young man was, was just to, to test it, to find out how the snooze was going to work, he himself became addicted to the snooze. It was supposed to be something that was going to help him get off his cigarette smoking, but then he became addicted to the snooze itself. Of all the drugs that are out there, the one that has absolutely no socially or medically redeeming factor is nicotine and tobacco. redeeming factor is nicotine and tobacco. We criticize the Afghans for their poppy and, and the heroin, but at least that comes out and provides us with morphine. We criticize the Mexicans for the marijuana, but we're now seeing that there are medicinal purposes for it. In all the years since tobacco was founded, found in the, in the, in, in the Americas and trans, and shipped off to Europe and every place else where they've managed to addict the entire world, no one has found a medicinal purpose for tobacco. I watched History Channel a few months ago, and in the Founding Fathers series on, on Discovery Channel, I, it was interesting to learn, and, and you can check this out if you want to order the, the film, it's, it's series, it's called Founding Fathers. America underwrote the cost of the Revolutionary War by addicting the world to tobacco. That's one claim to fame America has. But it goes around and it condemns the Afghans for their poppy and other areas for their other, other drugs. But Madam Speaker, we as a legislature have to stand together to protect our community, not only our children, but the future generations, and, and assure that these specific products, not the Nicorettes, not the strips on your arm, are prohibited from the importation. And if it is going to be brought in, then somehow have it at behind the counter in it, or at, at the, at the drugstore where you can purchase it as part of your, of your I'd best stop at this point before I say something that requires someone to rise in personal privilege. So, I thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to speak, and, um, I hope that a sufficient number of my colleagues will assist in protecting the children of this aisle by passing this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker Cruz. Then on the motion to send Bill 159 to the third reading file without any, Senator Pangolinan?
No objection.
Oh, no objection, then. Bill 238 is next, but we do not have, uh, no one has a committee report on their desk, so we're going to have to skip that and move to Bill Number 271. That was a motion that was, um, passed earlier, so I recognize Senator Palacios on Bill 271.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 271 proposes to repeal the authority of the Chief of Police to hire in-house attorney and to transfer the funding that's provided to the Guam Police Department for that position over, over to the Attorney General's Office, uh, and also with the provision that the Office of the Attorney General dedicate one attorney to assist the Guam Police Department.
Senator Palacios, can you make the motion first?
I, I, I moved that Bill 271, Madam Speaker, we placed on the reading file for purpose of discussion, and if I may speak briefly.
Yes, you may proceed.
Madam Speaker, it was during the budget hearing when it was, uh, at one time, I think, last budget hearing, not, not this last month, was that the, uh, it appears that the, uh, in-house attorney of the Guam Police Department was underutilized. And considering that and in light of the presentation of the AG with the need for additional attorneys, I did a study and then I found out that perhaps, uh, that, that position can be transferred to the Office of the Attorney General and still preserve the need of the Guam Police Department for legal services. I remember a long time ago, of course, in the eighties, when I was in the Guam Police Department, actually, uh, an Assistant Attorney General has been designated as the attorney for the Guam Police Officers, so anytime during the night police officers need guidance on some kind of advice or search and, and other things, that this attorney is always available. So, the tradition has been there. In fact, uh, the Chief Prosecutor, uh, Fyodor Dinko, at one time served as the, uh, Legal Counsel for the AG, so there is the, the, a good relationship that exists. Now, the need to transfer that position is in recognition of the need to, I guess, to strengthen the, uh, Office of the Attorney General. Demand is spent for that, one position can best be utilized and yield a higher level of benefit for the people of Guam if that position is transferred to the Attorney General's Office. Uh, that's one of the, but at no time, at no time, Madam Speaker, would the need for legal services, legal guidance, even briefing on legal issues, will be diminished to the Guam Police Department by this transfer. In fact, during the public hearing of Bill 271, the Attorney General's Office, Attorney Dinko, came and testified in favor of that. Now, the only opposition against that bill, of course, came from former Chief of Police Paul Suba, the in-house attorney himself, and the twenty-six honorary, honorary Deputy Chiefs of Police passed a resolution opposing that. But for the, uh, efficient utilization of the money spent or, or earmarked for that, and I understand it's about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, maybe upwards of a hundred and forty to include benefits, I was assured by the Attorney General's Office that that position will be best utilized there, and that will mean one, one additional position to probably be able to do, uh, when, when, when it's not, I, I guess, the functions or the need of the Guam Police Department is not that great, that perhaps they can also be assigned to do other things. And so, I like, I would like my colleagues to, uh, I want to assure my colleagues that at no time will the legal services to the Guam Police Department be diminished by such a transfer. In fact, when the legal counsel was still there before the retirement, issues coming before a, a file, a suit rather, against the Guam Police Department, it still ended up with the, with the Attorney General's Office. And the Attorney General's Office actually is the ultimate interpreter of legal issues when it comes, uh, to the Guam Police Department, which is a component of the government of Guam. So, it does not, again, uh, involve any risk, it does not provide, uh, it, it, it does not diminish the services that would be needed. Police officers support this bill, uh, attorneys will be more accessible readily and, and at any time, and the functions that this individual would do, and I, I refer to, uh, to you, Madam Speaker, and my colleagues, and it's on page three, uh, beginning on line eight, actually, these are the current functions of the Guam Police Department in-house legal counsel. Is, of course, to provide representation in civil matters, uh, to, to, to represent the Guam Police Department in administrative hearings such as the Civil Service Commission and civil litigation in which the department is interested, and also provide legal advice and guidance to the Guam Police Department, as well as provide consultation to GPD on training and other, uh, police-related matters. And these are the, the things that, that will continue to be provided to the Guam Police Department. And with that, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues to, uh, support, uh, Bill 271. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the motion, Senator Guthers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm pleased to support this bill. You know, over the years, we have observed, uh, how the Guam Police Department has used its attorney. And, you know, we've had a lot of concerns and questions about how insulated an attorney can become that is, uh, working for the Guam Police Department, and how aloof that attorney can become to the overall responsibilities that attorneys have that work for the government of Guam. We have seen instances where perhaps not good legal advice was given to the Guam Police Department with respect to certain actions that we have seen displayed all over the media lately. And that has resulted in questions of confidence from the people of Guam and the ability of the Guam Police Department to uphold the Constitution and the freedoms of expression, the freedom of the press, as well as the rights of our citizens. And it appears that there's even a difference of opinion when it comes to these issues between and among the attorneys representing the people of Guam through the Attorney General's Office and the attorney representing the Guam Police Department. And that really puts us in a very awkward situation. I believe it's time, Madam Speaker, for the Attorney General's Office to have more oversight with respect to how legal services are executed and performed, particularly on behalf of the line departments of this government. The concept of moving this position over to the Attorney General's Office and the funding for it, and for the Attorney General to have the ability to identify a competent, qualified attorney to represent the legal needs of the Guam Police Department is a very prudent move. When I had the opportunity to serve this community as Director of Public Safety and Acting Chief of Police with Senator Palacios, with Senator Tenorio, with Senator Frank Blas, we did not have a legal counsel. We worked very closely with the Attorney General's Office. We worked very closely with the Prosecution Division of the Attorney General's Office, and our needs were superbly met, our legal needs. As a matter of fact, there were very strong benefits to the then Department of Public Safety and the then Guam Police Department, the new Guam Police Department, because the Attorney General's Office, particularly the Prosecution Division, provided regular training to the men and women of the Guam Police Department and the Department of Public Safety on legal matters that they should be cognizant of, including the Criminal Code of Guam, the Vehicle Code of Guam, and other pertinent laws that police officers should know like a Bible and be able to quote from, from, and cite in their cases. The prosecutors would also join the police officers on special missions that required close legal guidance to ensure that there were no errors in how the police officers responded to serious, serious events. And the relationship was very close, and it was extremely professional. So, I would look at this movement of attorney services for the Guam Police Department through the Attorney General's Office as a positive thing, particularly since the funding would be available for the Attorney General to identify the appropriate individual to act as the Assistant Attorney General for the Guam Police Department. This is not an issue of money because the position's available, it's just a matter of relocating the position to the Attorney General's Office. I think it's a prudent move, it financially makes sense, and it provides the kind of guidance that we really need to see for the Guam Police Department to ensure a level of public accountability in legal matters that the people of this community can respect and support. So, I applaud the author of this bill, and I'd be happy to be a co-sponsor if the author allows me to be. And I think this is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to help our police department heal and move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. On the motion, I recognize Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you, I'd say, just my say, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill, um, but I do want to know, um, and, and if the author would yield to the question, is that we keep referencing, he says that it was supported by all the honorary chiefs of police, but the public, uh, number that I've heard is twenty-six, and the committee reports testimony that contained the honorary deputy chiefs of police, I only counted twenty-two. I just want to know, are there twenty-six or twenty-two deputy honorary chiefs of police or?
Senator Palacios, do you yield to the question?
Uh, yes, Madam Speaker. Actually, uh, at the time, uh, when this was early November twenty-two, uh, so that was the correct, uh, that's on record on this, but there are currently twenty-six honorary deputy chief of police, and that's in response to, uh, a request on, on a different public hearing, but that is correct, uh, twenty-two, actually, I can say all of them, which was twenty-two by November, supported, are rather opposed Bill 271. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and, and thank you very much to the author. You know, Madam Speaker, this is something that I think, uh, this body has, uh, once again, thought about with regards to consolidating resources and trying to not only, uh, manage and be more effe- effective, efficient, and, uh, and frugal in the financial resources that it relates to the procurement of human capital services, uh, but whether or not that's going to be our policy in terms of ensuring that if we do consolidate legal resources under the Office of the Chief Legal Officer of the Government of Guam, in this case, the Attorney General of Guam, uh, the elected position, uh, that this becomes a policy so that we can have a coherent legal policy of this government as it relates to the operations, the powers, the duties, uh, and the challenges presented to the different government instrumentalities, uh, as well as the different government agencies. And I differentiate between instrumentality and agencies because of that debate that occurs here. And our good, uh, author of the previous legislation has once again pushed the envelope maybe in, in that issue of, we need to and must look at developing a coherent legal policy, and to what extent does the right or authority to hire independent, third-party contract attorneys in this government digress from the development of a coherent legal policy under the Chief Legal Officer of the Government of Guam, the Attorney General? And should these instrumentalities of the government of Guam continue to be invested with the power to go out and hire their own councils, uh, rather than retaining those councils in a memorandum of understanding arrangement or a, uh, a billing arrangement with the Attorney General's Office, and it is the Attorney General's Office that will provide them with those legal services, who can then guide this development of this legal policy for these government instrumentalities that operate within this community and as a government entity? Because it doesn't matter to me whether or not, you know, the airport generates its own revenue, or the Port Authority generates its own, or GPA or GWA for that matter, it is that that asset belongs to the people of Guam, and the deployment of those assets must be in the best interest of the people of Guam. And there are times when the coherent legal policy would dictate that a single entity that a single entity speaks for that and not the Attorney General be on one side of the bench and the others, and the government entities on the other side of the bench. So this is a little easier on that debate because it is a, what do you call it? A line agency under, clearly under the executive direction of the government of Guam, therefore, the governor of Guam, that this move is pretty simple in that it is not a third branch of government, it is not an independent instrumentality, it is not a public corporation, it is not an autonomous agency. It is clearly part of the executive branch, and the Attorney General is not a fourth branch of government. It still belongs within the executive branch to provide for representation of the government of Guam as the chief legal officer of the government of Guam. And it can do this in this kind of arrangement, and that it brings back into this person, office responsible for the implement, not only the implementation, but the development of this coherent legal policy of this government of Guam. And it is, if we have that right to move that, then we have a right out of this body to develop what would be the coherent legal policy, and the Attorney General then enforces that coherent legal policy under representation parameters of that public office for the government of Guam, the people of Guam, all the branches of the government of Guam. So I support this move here. I support what we're trying to intend. And I guess the next step in this argument, or in this evolution or devolution, maybe it is a revolution, because a devolution is when you devolve your power to somebody else. So maybe the revolution would be to recapture that policy. I don't know. But I do know that it would be a revolution to move this back under the auspices of the Attorney General's office. And we should really begin to think about, from this perspective of the chief legal officer representing the government of Guam, the people of Guam, in the implementation of a coherent legal policy established by this body, that we bring that back and invest it in that office that was created for that very purpose. So I support this. I do have one minor amendment, and that would be, such transfer on page three of the bill, it reads, such transfer, page three, line 20, such transfer shall be completed no later than January 1st, 2010. And again, this is because of when the bill was originally introduced. So I think the words would be, would you strike out no later, not later than January 01, 2010, and then such transfer shall be effective within 30 days of the enactment of this, within 30 days of enactment, period. And so that would be the amendment that I would make to this bill, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, then, on line 20, where it says such transfer shall be effective within 30 days of enactment, and then delete the others. On the amendment, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Panglinen, can we also ask you on line 17, there's the same date?
Yes. Yeah, so that would be the same as line 17.
So the amendment also would be, would include on line 17 that it shall be effective within 30 days of enactment? On that amendment, then, without any objections, so ordered. On the motion, are there any other speakers? Senator Palacios, and I recognize you to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, of course, the amendment to include Dr. Guthers as the second co-sponsor, because we have not acted on that.
On the motion, then, to have Senator Guthers as the second co-sponsor, without any objections, so ordered.
That's all, Madam Speaker, and I thank my colleagues, and of course, with the amendment that just made, of course, this was made last November, and it was anticipated that perhaps it would be effective January, but now it's corrected. So I thank my colleague, and I hope that we pass this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So on the motion, then, to send Bill 271, as amended on the floor to the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Respecho, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In an effort to push the envelope here as well, the Committee on Rules has received a bill, 238, by your committee on education. It's been uploaded online, and so this bill is, we're able to do this bill within the next 20 minutes, I hope, and then we can come back with Bill 238, which is the T's and Trust bill. So the next bill, Madam Speaker, is 238.
Do, but we don't have a copy of Bill 238. Okay. At the request, however, Mr. Chairman, I mean, the chairman on OFB. Senator Panglinen, you wanted to, okay, but we want, what we're going to do is that, yes, we will recess until 2:00 this afternoon, and the first bill that will be...
At 2:00, Madam Speaker, before we got the announcement that Bill 238 was ready, it would be to, when we come back at 2:00, we begin with 278, and then we'll go, then we'll proceed with the way that the motion was made in terms of moving on to the next bill or going back to the previous bill if it's ready.
Okay. So when we return...
But just to, for the record, is to come back at 2:00 with 278.
Yes. We'll be back at 2:00, and the first bill on the top of the agenda will be 278. And after 278, we would revert back to 238 and then continue on. So we will recess then until 2:00 this afternoon. Please be on time, because we have an aggressive agenda. Thank you very much. After a brief recess, we will take up Bill Number 278-30 LS. And I'd like to recognize the chairman of the committee who is sponsoring this bill. Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
Sidoos Massey, Saina Massey, Senora Nuwampat. Zau na biotogi paugut, zabio presentad, zabo mwebe, mwebe estei, oktu nu numeruni mapropo ni 278-30 para ta autorisa i Ancestral Lands Commission para una kabalis, zan una inte ru imklaman i orihi not na landowners na mangaitanugi zatizan niman manoi toti i gubennunguahan zan i AB Wampat International Airport para sia uminanteni itano i orihi not na mangaizu. Zan estina oktu apropo ni na para tanaguaha para una atulaika edzu na tonu i magoti ni Guam Airport zan tonu niman mana lalu toti gi ni federat niman matsuli ni gaigi i Ancestral Lands Commission ni estama dititmina na tadza duenu ni orihi not na gaizu. Animan manoi toti i status unidos ni estina tonu ani mapedi i spania gi gera ni mid, i 1898. Manoi toti i gubennu ti manoi zan i gubennumu manteni estina tonu. Madam Speaker, before I go into the bill, and that was just the introduction of the title. Estanae? I made a motion to place Bill Number 278-30 as substituted by the Committee on Appropriation, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, an act to authorize the Ancestral Lands Commission to extinguish claims of original landowners with tijan properties transferred to the AB Wampat International Airport Authority by the United States of America by a land exchange with properties identified pursuant to Public Law 30-6. And I'd like to speak on the bill.
Yes, and you may continue.
Thank you very much, Sidoos Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill continues the very clear policy of the government of Guam in how it will treat the people of Guam. Most importantly, the people of Guam who originally occupied this land and their ties to the land, and how it would treat the forceful taking of these lands by occupying governments. And when these lands, through the petition and the work of the leaders of Guam, have been returned to the government of Guam, how we're going to treat these lands? This policy is very clear and definitive. To the greatest extent possible, whenever any land under our current government is returned by the government who exists in our community that have been deemed excess to the needs of that government that have occupied our island, that these properties, when they're returned to the government of Guam, to the greatest extent possible, we will return those lands to the original landowners from whom the lands were taken. And I'm very, very proud to say that I was part of the original sponsors and proponents of this policy with, of course, former Lieutenant Governor and Senator Eddie Rages being the first and the primary mover for the implementation of that policy. I remember distinctly, because of course, I had the opportunity to work with Lieutenant Governor Rages as a staffer when we were in the Bordaloo administration. He was, of course, the Lieutenant Governor, and I was, at that time, a special assistant and then ultimately the Deputy Chief of Staff for that administration. And of course, with his background and his knowledge and... Lieutenant Governor Rages was intimately familiar with the land issues as it relates to the taking of these lands by the military for military purposes. And that as somebody who had worked in the Pentagon was familiar with the political process of the military's policy of keeping as much land as they could and fighting to retain every possible square inch of land that they have taken from our people. And he knew that, in his experience as a military man, that there was more land than the military could ever use. And I would dare to say, that's still true today, that there's more land behind the fences that the military continues to hang on to and hold on to. That there's more land behind the fences that the military continues to hang on to and hold on to than they will ever need. That they will ever realistically need. To advance the sphere of freedom in this part of the world or any part of this world. And that their attempts to continue to hold on to this land and expand really is continuation of this policy of manifest destiny and. We have a right, it is ours, Guam is ours. You are a possession. You know, and sometimes I can feel okay when they say we are a possession with the land. But. When they say that even the people are a possession of the United States. It just, it. It doesn't sit right with the history of the United States. Of justice and freedom and democracy and rights. But then that's where they started, because remember, the U.S. started with this principle that you can own another human being. That it was perfectly right, it was perfectly ethical, it was perfectly just, and it was perfectly legal to own people. But to the credit of our nation, we have moved forward, they have moved forward, we have moved forward. And we realized that that once policy that was embedded in the fabric of our nation. Was no longer a policy that they wished to continue to support, and they went to war over it. To ensure that justice and equality are not just words on a paper, in a constitution. To be displayed or paraded about, but to be lived. Not only by the people of the nation, but by the government of the nation. And, yes, we had conversations like this. When we try to determine what other nation do we want to live under, if that's a good word. We really don't want to live under any nation, we want to live as a part of a nation. And that's another debate for another day. And that's called political status and our relationship with the U.S. And we won't go into that, but these are the kind of debates on what the U.S. means. And what its history has been and how it has changed over the history. And why we continue to believe. That this is a good nation to be a partner to. It's not a good nation to be a mistress to, it's not a good nation to be a possession of, it's not a good nation to have them dominate you. But it is a good nation to be a partner and a part of. When it wants to, it allows. Every single member of this community. The opportunity and the equality to achieve your own personal greatness. And we go back to what this bill means, because that's where this bill is coming from. In terms of, we had convinced the U.S. And whether we want to say we convinced them, or the policy just changed, just like slavery. It was no longer in their best interest to continue to hang on to the lands, but for whatever real reason. They changed their policy, and it is our fortune. That we are here at this time and place when they changed that policy, and they have given back the lands to the government of Guam. And it was my fortune to be a part of this body. When we were deliberating, what do we do with the lands? Do we continue to dominate our people by holding on to the lands that belonged to them just because they returned it back to the government? And do we want to continue to hoard this land and hold on to it and let it lie fallow? And hollow? Or do we put it back and restore justice? For an injustice that may not have been committed by us here in this government, in this body? And that's where we're at. And that's the policy we have today, that we will not, when we get these lands back. And it is given back to the government, and we know that there are original landowners. Whose properties and equality and fairness and justice that occurred in the taking of these properties were not. Under those conditions, that the just and moral thing to do is to give the property back. And so we have proceeded with that. And so we have thousands of our own people who now have benefited from that policy. And there's a group of our people who have not been made whole. Who if this government did nothing but held on to the lands that were given back. We would continue the injustice perpetrated upon them by the military and federal government by holding on to these lands. And so we decided that we were going to try and fashion a mechanism for making these people whole. And one of those ways, in an evolution of the policy of returning this land. There's another way of making this, because not all lands can be or will be returned to this government. And therefore can be transferred to the original landowners. That I don't think we're in a short future, or even the long future, going to see naval station being returned. Or the runways at Anderson being returned. In this case, or the runways at N A S being returned to these original landowners. And so the policy that we propose to advance and continue. Is that if we can't make them whole by the return of these lands, because they are now within the government's hands for a government purpose. That we will make their claims whole in one of two ways. And this is the enabling statute, that we will one, make it available through a cash payment in a trust. And the second is that to the greatest extent possible, when lands are available for an exchange. That we can extinguish and make them whole by maybe not giving them back the lands that were taken from them. But other lands that they can have and hold and pass on to their heirs. And their descendants and the future generations that will follow them. And that is the philosophy behind this bill. You know, is to ensure that we give these people the opportunity. To get these lands back. So that those who were made landless by the takings of the property and can't be made. Given those properties back, get another piece of property in exchange. And that is the intent of this bill. And so through this process, this government had convened several, had passed legislation. And convened a task force in legislation that would work with the Ancestral Lands Commission and the other agencies of the government. To identify lands that are available, that could be made available to exchange, in this case. For those landowners where the property was returned, but instead of going to the government of Guam. Or the ancestral lands, it was returned in this case to the airport. And the airport continues to maintain and retain these properties. And so for those landowners whose property lies within the airport boundaries. That through this task force process, identified two parcels of land. In which these individuals can decide to participate in a land exchange program. That will forever extinguish their claim to the property retained by the airport. And the two parcels that are identified are parcels in South Finnegazan. And a parcel up on Route fifteen called the Marble Command up by the Paget area. And in today's discussion, when you talk about land and the expansion of the military and Paget. There's a lot of angst and consternation and concern within our community of. What the plans that were put in place that can affect the rest of the community. And so rightly so, members of this body as well as members of our community are concerned about what would happen. Should these lands be returned and how they would affect what is most concerning to our community, the preservation. Of our history and our culture. Of how we got here and why we are here and why we are the people of the land. And that in trying to right a wrong by an occupying nation, by. Re-attaching the people to the land. That we don't destroy what was there before in the history of that. And that is a concern, and I'm sure that, and I know that members of this body will present. An amendment that will address that concern that I am concerned about. And so the elements of the bill are pretty simple, Madam Speaker. Is that these two parcels will become available through the Ancestral Lands Commission process of. Exchanging this land for land that's been retained by the airport. And that there is a timeframe for this, that the Ancestral Lands Commission will, within a hundred and eighty days. Accept all of the claims for those original landowners whose properties have been retained by the airport. Perfect those claims, verify those claims. And then the two parcels will be made available to these landowners for an exchange. And there is some give and take on this, because the airport. And the property retained is a little larger than these two parcels. But because the landowners know the value of land and how much, how little land we really have left to address everybody's concern. That even though these two parcels are smaller, that this bill will ensure that. If you participate in the land exchange, that you will accept a smaller parcel, but proportional to what you held. As it relates to the land retained by the airport. So that if you have ten percent of the property that's retained by the airport. In this land exchange, and that was a hundred acres, in this land exchange. If you get ten percent of these two parcels, you would only get ninety acres. But that will satisfy all your claims to any future claims against the ancestral lands process and the ancestral lands bank. And they do this because they understand how little and precious the land is. But they also understand the need to ensure that we retain enough lands in the ancestral lands. To take care of those others that may not be in their same situation. The people that, whose lands will never still be returned and may not be available for a land exchange. And so that's one of the conditions of this bill. Number two is that the commission will ensure, these landowners have worked together, Madam Speaker, for years. Trying to get to today. And that in working together, they have cooperated and worked with the government. Even though the bill was vetoed by the governor. We are here today because this body, and they continue to work with this body to support their position and their desires. And this body has. And so, in working with the commission, they've come to an understanding of how the property will be divided. But this bill will ensure that when the Ancestral Lands Commission develops the process for deciding who gets which parcel and how it's configured. That that process will be fair and equal. And the landowners are very confident that they are in that realm of understanding today for the distribution of these lands. And the other condition is that because of the sensitive nature of the historic and archaeological sensitivities that may be involved in these parcels. Is that we will require that the Historic Preservation Office review and cooperate with the landowners receiving property. Under this legislation to ensure the preservation and protection of significant historic artifacts and environmental resources contained in this property. So we are moving forward, but moving cautiously and trying to protect the heritage that we have. In these lands and the lands surrounding these properties. And the other amendments, Madam Speaker, and that's really the gist of the bill. But I do have a couple of amendments, Madam Speaker. Because of the flux and the fluidity of the plans for these properties and. The unknown factors with regards to the military's desire and the speculation that's occurring on these properties. We wanted to ensure that the government still has an option on these properties. In agreement with the landowners, so there are two amendments that I'm proposing, Madam Speaker. And they've both been passed out, and one would be to add. A section, actually it should be to, section seven would, the severability would just move down. But to add a new section, so in this case it'd be section, a new section seven. But I'm sorry that the amendment was written out as section eight. So, but to add a new section after section six, and it would basically say that the government's.
I think what it is, is that you have a, instead of a man section seven, that that will be a new section seven and then a new section eight. And then renumber, so the severability clause will be at the end. Clerk should be able to follow.
Thank you very much. So the amendment would read that the government of Guam shall have the right to present a counter offer.
Or the right of first refusal first, you want to do that first?
Yes.
That's a seven, yes.
I think I'm only confused with the exact amendment, but I have a copy of it. So the first amendment I'd be to amend, to add a new section seven. That the government shall have the right of first refusal to purchase or lease the property as identified in the act. When the exchanged property is a subject of a bona fide sale or lease offer. So basically this just allows that when the landowners get the property back, they can develop it, they can do what they want with it. But if they get a, an offer and they want to move forward, that they notify the government and the government kind of says, you know what? We'd like to have the opportunity to develop that and we can then make an offer to you. And if we don't make the offer, you continue and your rights are not inhibited to development of your property. So that really is the first amendment that I wanted to present.
On the amendment, has anyone like to speak on it, or any objections, no objections, so order.
The second amendment, Madam Speaker, would be then to add another, a new section, this time it would be section eight. And that would be that the government shall have a right to present a counter proposal to a bona fide offer. Received to purchase or lease any property received by any eligible original landowners pursuant to this act. So not only do we have the right of first refusal, and we can initiate that, but if they do get a counter, an offer. And it's bona fide, that we can do a counter offer to that. And again, it's just working with the landowners and it doesn't inhibit and really preclude or diminish their rights to the development of their property.
On the amendment, are there any objections, no objections, so order.
The other amendment, Madam Speaker, of course, is that because the Paget site borders the historic and significantly cultural heritage village of Paget. And that there was concern with access to that site. Under the military's plans to take it and develop a firing range there. That even when we return the property, we wanted to ensure that the public will have access to that cultural site. So it would be to add a new section again, to read that the access to Guam's cultural site of Paget. Shall be provided and ensured in the distribution of the lands in the land exchange authorized herein. And such requirement for access shall be declared public access. So it will ensure that the property is transferred back to private hands. But that part of that transfer will ensure that the people of Guam have access to their cultural heritage site of Paget.
On the amendment, and no objections, so order. On the amendment, and no objections, so order.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. On the motion, I recognize Senator Guthriez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have an amendment to Bill 278-30. All of us here, and of course on our island, have been very much focused on the area of Pagat on Route 15 over the last year and a half especially with respect to the planned military buildup for Guam. As you all know, this area has been identified as a potential preferred option for the construction of a firing range. And when the Guam Joint Program Office conducted public hearings on Guam a couple of months ago on the draft environmental impact statement, many, many, many of our people and our resource agencies and even some federal agencies registered serious concerns about converting parts of Pagat to accommodate the direct or ancillary needs of a potential military firing range. I think that Bill 278 is very commendable. And I know that so many, many people devoted many, many, many months of hard work to comply with the law and the requests of the legislature in developing a plan to satisfy the injustice that they have long endured. And I also know that many of these folks out there are looking for a land exchange, really not for themselves, but for their children and their grandchildren to ensure that the injustice of the past is remedied in a way that will keep their family from being landless and the generations that follow them. So Madam Speaker, in order to address the concerns of the people of Guam with respect to a potential firing range and/or ancillary warfare activities in this area, I've developed an amendment to add a new section to Bill 278-30. And the amendment reads, "The properties identified herein shall not be made available via lease, sale, or any other form of land alienation to the U.S. Department of Defense or any other U.S. federal government instrumentality for the purpose of construction and operation of a firing range, comma, warfare training, and/or for any similar purpose." The original landowners have fervently testified they wish to receive these lands and to retain these lands in perpetuity for their families in memory and honor of the sacrifices made by their ancestral families since the taking of their land by the United States after World War II. And then it continues on, just for the benefit of our listeners and our viewers, "These lands will benefit future generations who have been impacted by this historical injustice. The return of these ancestral lands today by the government of Guam fulfills its earlier commitment when it kept Tejan properties for expansion of the airport despite FAA and GIAA's refusal to allow compensation of these landowners from airport revenues." Now, Madam Speaker, I think we're accomplishing two things here. With this bill, we are dealing with the need to recognize the sacrifices of the Tejan landowners and at the same time, we are reinforcing Resolution 275, which was passed by this legislature under the authorship of Senator Spisho with all of us as co-authors, which made it very clear the legislature's opposition to allowing the construction and operation of a firing range on publicly owned lands and the alienation and leasing of that land to the Department of Defense or any other federal instrumentality for a firing range purpose or similar purpose. So we are actually reinforcing our original position on this matter with this amendment. And at the same time, we are satisfying the desire and the rightful acquisition of this land by individuals who experienced a terrible injustice many decades ago that this government wants to recognize. I do wish to point out that I believe this is the beginning of similar actions and must be the beginning of similar actions for others in a similar circumstance who have not been properly recognized and compensated for land that they lost. We have to deal with that in the same way we are dealing with this in future legislative actions. Madam Speaker, as you know, recently Pagat area was recognized because of its ancient village, because of the artifacts, because of the animal species and other historical recognition and importance of this land in the culture and traditions and lives of the Chamorro people. And all of us here, I believe, want to continue recognizing that. And I believe by considering Bill 278 with this amendment, that we will be able to achieve that goal. So I ask my colleagues to please support this amendment. Thank you very much.
On the Guthriez amendment, are there any objections, no objections, so order. On the main motion, I have Senator Palashis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 278 for everything that is said in the legislative findings of this bill and all the provisions in the bill that proposes to correct the inequities currently being suffered by the Tejan landowners. Bill 278, Madam Speaker, strengthen the intent and spirit of the law that authorizes the return of excess military land to the original landowners. It is never the intent of the law, Madam Speaker, that the Tejan excess land be given to the airport and to benefit only the airport at the expense of the original landowners. And so the original landowners simply are claiming entitlement to their ancestors' land. Bill 278 proposes to return ownership to them and to establish a mechanism for exchange. Bill 278, Madam Speaker, is long in coming and today I say let us pass Bill 278 and put this matter to complete closure. And for that, I rise in support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palashis. Senator Spisho, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would be remiss if I didn't stand up to do two things. Number one, commend the families of the Tejan properties for coming together and for possibly putting together a formula that can be used by other families who find themselves in a similar situation. Because as this legislature recognizes, this bill goes a long way to redress one area and one particular group of individuals. But it would also give us the energy to move forward to figure out how other families in their plight could be somehow compensated. I also want to publicly rise to commend the Oversight Chair for figuring out a way to make this work for this particular area. I know some might argue that why only do something for a particular group of individuals? How about the other families who find themselves in a similar situation in other parts of the island? Well, I say to that, Madam Speaker, that what this good speaker has done, the good gentleman from Baragata, and what we're doing to join forces with these families who've organized themselves could really be a formula that other families can follow and that we could redress their similar concerns. And so, you know, I want to publicly congratulate Mr. Benny Crawford and his group and his family and other families in this area for really, really coming together. Because as you know, if you look at the history of these returns of the lands, the lands that were taken by the federal government and then returned to the government of Guam, and then some lands remain in government hands, some lands were actually returned to the original landowners. But if you look at what has happened with other families and how their properties were returned to them, it was really a bittersweet moment because these families couldn't come together, couldn't agree who was going to get what and who was, how it was going to divide it. And then we see that when families have to divide their inheritance, Madam Speaker, it creates a lot of tension from succeeding generations. And I don't see this happening with this group and I don't ever possibly see it happening as a result of this bill. This bill would actually solidify what they committed to doing for each other and for their future generations. I'm very happy in a sense that certain amendments were put into this bill. And not only the amendments offered by the sponsor of the bill, but the amendments offered by the retiring speaker, our chairperson of the military buildup. I know there's some concern that we took a very strong position against that parcel that is being identified right now as a firing range. We took the position that we're against the firing range being held in that area and that amendment that we just adopted addresses that concern. So if there's any other concerns that any of our colleagues may have, I think they should do what the previous speakers have done and offer amendments to make it more palatable. And I think the, as the sponsor of the bill has done, he's been really open to any amendments that any of us have had. And that's why although we were supposed to come back at 2 o'clock, you didn't reconvene session right away, Madam Speaker, because we're working behind the scenes to craft this amendment and make sure it's palatable. So, you know, that's the legislative process and that's how we do what we do to make sure that these bills get more support from our colleagues and eventually move on. I'm hoping that we can get the veto-proof passage of this bill so that we can send a message to the Governor of Guam that he has no choice but to sign it. Because if he vetoes something like this again, this legislature will rise and override that veto. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to express my full support for this bill.
Thank you very much, Senator Spisho. On the main motion, there being none, I'd like to call the primary author then to close. Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Ns. Dusmasi, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, when I first started and opened, I talked about my conversations with former Lieutenant Governor Eddie Rages and then Senator Rages, who became a colleague of mine, when we were deciding what direction do we want to go with regards to the land and recognizing that, you know, Guam and the people of Guam, the Chamoros, land is part of our inheritance, inheritance, it's part of our heritage, it's part of our being. It's the place where we come from. It's the place where we raise our families. And I didn't want to end this bill and discussing that without recognizing conversations I had with another colleague in terms of moving forward, this return of this lands and someone who else believed the same belief I had, who joined me as a member of this legislature several years later, and that's Senator Mark Forbes. You know, he and I had discussions on what do we do? You know, I always tried to temper Senator Forbes a little bit because he tends to get too creative sometimes. And so he would present this plan and scheme and, but it's all to ensure the preservation of the land and the restoration of the land back into the hands of the people. And so we worked on many things and one of the things we worked on was on this Tejan issue. And he's not here to join me in this kind of bringing a closure to this chapter of the debate of land issues on Guam, but he certainly was there at the beginning and is certainly here, I think, in spirit. And I do want to give him my appreciation and I'm sure the landowners want to do the same. That he is a part of this solution and that his efforts add to the efforts of everyone here today to bring this chapter and bring this justice to the Tejan landowners. So I wanted to ensure that I express my appreciation to him for his efforts and his leadership and his support over time on this issue. It didn't end with him leaving the legislature. We know that he continues to be involved and continues to talk to the landowners. He may not be talking to some of us, but I know that he certainly has continued his support for the landowners and I think part of this solution today needs to recognize his efforts and give him credit for that. The man motu pagunai, Speaker, gi ottimo, lo ti ottimo. Sa ta tumua na masia hafa adisi di esti ilezilatura guini, ti hitamu manenea itautou ni porotinei gui itetu. Ti makpou para tapasa esti nalai, lo ti munodan itetuota. Estaki ma manteni dan man manoi titulu itautou ni itano ni sinya tahalu makpou dan munodan itetuota. Pos pa prema sigura, esti itautou ni tasanganganina istigi ottimo para binse gui. Ahi, si Senator Roy Spisho arekognisa ha na anita pasa ifuneenina nalai ni para tato guiti tasko sa veto i gubenu. Zani okintutusi esti xai man gaitanuleku nisisita na tanafampasensiai. Didida sa mampasensia lo man persistent. You know, ti man tainu sun itetu niya para ol masiguru na tato guituota. Lo magai na man respetau an mapresentai kausa uniya dan minalaga uniya para hitas todu. Za donkulu na gradismentuni tai manu man matraatahit guini na ni marekognisa na ti nahla lang esti na tautu dan gaiminaka esti lo siga lo gui tato gui tai manu hafasinha tato gui para tafan ma ajuda para tato guituota. Pos tapasa esti nalai, tanoi i gubenu, pue di a fitmaha za titanisita na tabirein moagi za ta override. Lo angin motu i ora ni poromato gui itetu. Bea sigura na sempia gayu gui za bea siga gumia mo'na esti na machotu gui itetu estaki magai na man manoi esti itautou xai ni titulu para itano. Za ufan diskonsa todu man mo'pus. I magnatanges ufan pumara man mano'gisa estamatu i ora ni marekognisa na tanananti ini lachi. Ss. Dusmasi, Madam Speaker, para todu si man gatsungu guini olum ni nazudu niya guini ni esti na proponi za pue di magai tanafakpusi. Ss. Dusmasi. esti ki magai na man manoei esti itautau xai ni titulu para itano. Zha u fan diskonsa, todo man mo'pus. I magnatangis, u fan pumara man manoei sa esti motu i ora ni marekonisa na tanaginanti ini la'zi. Ensidus Massey, Madam Speaker, para todo si man ga tsongu gui ni olum, ni nazudu niya gui ni, ni esti na proponi zha pue di magai tanafakpusi. Ensidus Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. So on the motion then to place Bill 238 as amended on the, I mean, 278 as also amended on the floor, down to the third reading file without any objections. So ordered. We're now going back to Bill 238, and I'd like to recognize Senator Panglinen.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move the Bill 238-30 COR to be placed in the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on the motion.
Continue.
Thank you, Ensidus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 238 is an act to add a new section 3133 of 17GCA, Chapter 3, relative to the creation of the Department of Education Financial Supervisory Commission. Madam Speaker, this is something that we thought about when we're trying to get the cooperation needed to support the Department of Education in managing its resources and ensuring that they get their resources needed to ensure the quality education that they provide to our children. And the number-one resource they have to ensure that all the other resources in their possession and at their disposal can function is the financial resources necessary. And what this bill does is that it sets some standards for the financial management of the Department of Education. And it sets about, goes about doing that by taking a look at its budget, developing a spending plan, a financing plan, an expenditure plan, all of these things that go into the day-to-day operation of the Department of Education to ensure that it flows smoothly. But when it has and runs into a problem, as identified by the metric set up in here to measure when those things come into play, that other experts within this government come together and assist the Department of Education in working out and working through this, any financial emergency or exigency that it may have as a result of the resources that is allocated to it. And so what it does is, it provides for this supervisory commission that only kicks into place when there are problems at the Department of Education in which need the attention and the cooperation of the executive, the legislative branch, and of course, the Department of Education Financial Management Team. And so it sets up this commission in which the Director of the Bureau of Budget and Management, of course, is responsible for the allotment process, will come together and will chair this financial supervisory committee. And the Director of the Office of Finance and Budget of the Legislature shall serve as the vice chairperson. And then they meet once a month and using procedures that they set into place to review and look over the financial operations of the Department of Education. They're not there to make decisions, they're there as a sounding board when things are going fine and they are able to review this process. And there are three other members that are appointed, to the public auditor, a parent of a child currently enrolled in the public school system, the general accounting supervisor of the Department of Administration is an alternate member, and of course, the superintendent serves as the executive secretary. And what it does is that when there is an emergency, then this financial supervisory team kicks into place and is given some authority to direct some adjustments in the allocation of these resources within the Department of Education. We're not taking anything away, we're just allowing then these financial experts who know how much cash is at DOE every single day and saying, "We can give you this much cash tomorrow, so we're going to look at allocating then this much cash to meet these critical needs of the Department of Education." And so when things happen that are not part of the normal operating structure and there's an emergency, then we ensure that these decision-making processes can come into play. And so we designate the status of the financial condition of the Department of Education, and then based on where they're at in their current operations, then the authorities kick into place. And so we would have a Code A status, meaning that things are stable, that there's a positive in the variance reports in the budgeted and expense categories. Condition B means a warning indicating that DOE has a negative variance report exceeding 10% of the year-to-date budgeted amount in the expense category or 5% in the aggregate at the time of the reporting. Condition C means a watch indicating that it has a negative balance exceeding 2% of the approved budget, that there's over expenditure occurring. And then Condition Red is the emergency, in which there's a failure to implement a corrective financial recovery plan within 15 working days of the submission to the Emergency Financial Supervisory Committee. And so when these metrics are achieved, then there's no problem. But when you get to the emergency, then we're able to kick in all these other government entities that have information readily available as to what resources are available and what resources can be made available within the budgetary authorities passed by this body. So it doesn't allow this body to go outside of what the budgetary authority that is given to them by this legislative body. So it doesn't diminish our powers here at all whatsoever. And so this is very, we put this together, actually, Madam Speaker, before this third-party fiduciary thing came about with the federal government, in that it wanted a third outside independent party to account for the expenditure of these federal funds. Madam Speaker, the local fund support for the Department of Education dwarfs the federal fund support. I know we say we get a lot of federal money to support public education on Guam, but when you think about it, the total federal support for the Department of Education is probably 25%, maybe 30% of the entire DOE budget. So it only makes sense that the expenditure of the resources given to the Department of Education by this legislative body is accounted for and that it's put to the priorities that are identified by this body in the Budget Act. And when that thing doesn't happen and we see that they are on a path of deviating from financial accountability and the deployment of these resources with the priorities set by this government, then we get these other entities to come in and help redirect so that we get back on track. So this committee or commission would just allow DOE additional financial expert resources existing within the government of Guam to make sure they stay on track and to make sure that when they start veering off the track, that we can actually have them get back on the track through the assistance that is rendered by this new supervisory commission that is set up. So I ask my colleagues for their support, and before I close, I'd like to make an amendment that yourself, Madam Speaker, be added as the first co-sponsor under them.
On the motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Are there anyone who would like to speak on the motion, Bill 238? There, Senator Taitegui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when this bill came out, about two weeks before it did come out, I too had an opportunity to speak with a couple of individual colleagues, and in my discussion, I wanted to go a little bit further than what was here. I guess in my approach, it was a little bit more radical. And that idea was to actually have a third party put in place for DOE's financial study. And I shared this with my colleague, the author of the bill, when his bill came out and said that, you know, Senator, I too had an idea, but it was a little bit more radical than yours, but I think that this is a happy medium, the solution that you have for this oversight hearing, not oversight hearing, this committee to oversee the financials of DOE. And I do support, very much support, this piece of legislation. You know, even though when we have the third-party management team that will be in place, it's always good to have someone overseeing that one as well. You know, it's always good to have more than one head thinking, and this would definitely help with regards to being able to see what they're doing in their reports. I do have a question, though, if the author would yield, and that basically is the cost. Is there any type of financial cost in order to put this group together?
Senator Panglinen, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I just heard a question. There is a...
A funding source on this? I do see that there is a FINE.
There's a FINE. This is so vertical that we, if a member of the dead, if it proves my own director of the office of finances, subject to a FINE. So this will make sure that there is no cost.
There's no cost to this. Okay, other than that, Madam Speaker, thank you so much, and I stand in support of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Taitegui. On the motion, I recognize Senator Palashis.
Madam Speaker, again, I rise in support of Bill 238. Bill 238, Madam Speaker, will address the current and longstanding problem of financial management or mismanagement, however one looks at it, in DOE. Madam Speaker, in my tenure here of more than five years now, never means every year that we have to meet in emergencies to address funding issues for mills, books, facility maintenance, and whatever. There are so many other problems. And there is no convincing indication, Madam Speaker, that DOE would be able to administer the multimillion-dollar annual budget every year that we appropriate in a manner that would be satisfactory to the taxpayers of Guam. Madam Speaker, Bill 238 will establish a systems whose primary role is to monitor the financial health of DOE by developing and supervising a financial status designation of DOE finances. That's what we need. The main purpose of these systems, which is a commission, is to identify in advance any signs of financial problem that may compromise the mandates of DOE. And these members comprise of the Director of Administration, Director of BBMR, the Director of Office and Budget Management, which is actually, we would get involved to some extent, and of course, the OPA. These are the heads of agencies that care about good finances. And I believe that Bill 238 will mitigate the current issues with respect to the financial issues and problems that now is plaguing DOE. I rise in support of Bill 238, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Palashis. On the motion, on Bill 238 to place in third reading, there are no one else who would like to speak then, so are there any objections to it going down to the third reading file? Without objections, so ordered. I recognize Senator Taitegui and bill, substitute bill number 303.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I ask that this body move Bill 303 to the third reading file.
Would you like to speak on it?
Actually, Madam Speaker, I would like to reserve that until the closing.
Okay, so...
And if there's anyone else who would like to speak on it?
Yes, who would like to speak on the motion, Senator Panglinen, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 303, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, is a bill that I think certainly addresses communities of Ordot and In'arahan as we move forward with implementing the solution that we may not all agree with, but a solution that is needed and long time coming with regards to handling of our solid waste. For many, 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 many years, the community of Ordot and the surrounding areas have been burdened and saddled with living next to a dump. You know, and for many, 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 many years, we tried to say landfill, but then I guess we just finally realized, it's a dump. And the way we've handled and managed that has made sure that the people living next door know it's a dump and live with a dump. And so the burden has been borne by that community. And as we move forward in trying to find a solution to, what do we do because we no longer have the space to deal with it, nor can we manage, given the complexity of what has occurred, as well as given the geography and geology of the area in which we have caused pollution to the river of that community, that we needed to do something. And even if we did something and closed it, it doesn't really erase the suffering and the burden that these people have had to endure all these years. And so when we then finally, through the intervention of other institutions, we came out with the solution and the implementation, the beginning of the implementation of that solution of how do we handle our municipal solid waste with the construction of the Lazon landfill in In'arahan. And while we can be reasonably assured, we can't be guaranteed, we should guarantee the people of In'arahan, but I don't want to sit here and say, "I'm gonna guarantee it if I'm not responsible for the day-to-day operations or the management or the direction of it." You know, in other words, if I was governor, I'd guarantee it, but I can't because I'm not governor. So how do we ensure and give reasonable assurance that should, that the burden of living next to a landfill, and it will be a landfill because we now have the regulatory processes to ensure that it gets operated as a subtitle D EPA, US Guam EPA-approved landfill, and that the operations and management plan is such that it will be approved by these institutions and monitored by these institutions, then we know that at the minimum, it's definitely not gonna be like Ordot, and at the maximum, that nobody will know it's there. But we still want to ensure and give a benefit to this new community, but we don't want to forget the old one. And so this bill puts into place what is done in other jurisdictions, and that is recognizing the imposition of landfills on a community, on a host community. And because Ordot is going to continue to need intervention, even if we no longer put a single piece of trash in Ordot, once Lazon is open, even if we don't put a single trash, the remnants of that landfill dump will still be with that community. And so we want to provide a benefit, I don't want to say a benefit, a mitigation, an apology, if you want to call it that, to these people in the form of providing them resources that their community can decide on what to do with to enhance the quality of life in their community. And I want to thank Senator Taitegui, and, you know, I almost again took my liberty of being chairman to put my name here, but I couldn't.
No objection.
But I do want to thank her for allowing me to be a part of this process. And I want to thank the mayor of In'arahan and the mayor of Franklin Taitegui and the mayor of... mayor of Orad, Chalampago, Jesse Gogui, for continuing to work with the author as well as my committee in moving this forward. We even had the pleasure of driving down to Inarahan in the late evening, you know, relaxed getting there, and then when we got there, we had, of course, our typical Chamuru hospitality of the mayors down there. And we had another public hearing in the community to listen to the concerns of that community. And of course, they support this. And of course, they know that if they had their way, we wouldn't have a dump there. But they know that the process and the road is too long, and that we can't change the direction, and that what is being offered to them by this body and the author of the bill is a way to ensure that they will have resources that they can deploy to ensure that their community and the quality of life in their community will not deteriorate and perhaps will instead improve by the resources being provided by this piece of legislation. So I want to, once again, thank the author, and of course, the mayor of Inarahan, the mayor of Orad, Chalampago, for their efforts in working with us in bringing this bill to this floor for consideration by this body. And I will be a little bit timable here and ask that I be placed as the third co-sponsor. So I make that motion, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, then, for Senator Panglinen to be, when you said the third co-sponsor, doesn't mean he's the third person on the line, because he's the primary author, and then there's one, two, and three. So he'll be after Senator Blas, because I wanted to make sure I explained that, because Senator Blas, you are recognized on the motion. Wait, I'm sorry, before I do that, so, no objections, then, to Senator Panglinen being the third co-sponsor or the fourth on the line, so ordered. So Senator Blas, then, on the motion, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Whew, I thought I lost my place in the liner.
No, you did not.
But, you know, Madam Speaker, in all honesty, just being placed on the bill and being honored and thankful to the author of allowing me to be a co-sponsor to the legislation, whether I was the third one or whether I was the fifteenth one, it would have been an honor to be able to be part of the legislation. And I too want to congratulate and applaud the author for this legislation. I do remember back in, when this bill was being drafted, she and I had some conversations because at the same time, I guess we had both spoken to the same person in the Municipal Planning Council with regards to this, and in comparing the bills, I saw that she had the better bill. And I just asked that I be a co-sponsor to it as well. And, you know, I'm glad that it's at where it's at today. Also want to thank not only the mayor of Inarahan, Mr. Taitegui, but also the members of the Municipal Planning Council, who shared some ideas with regards to this host community initiative. I want to thank also the chairman of the oversight for moving this piece of, this important piece of legislation, that I would think, but also helping to contribute to making this even a better bill, a bill that is, that actually would provide the proper mitigation. I can recall the retiring speaker, you know, had, and I too have a problem as far as, you know, what this basically is classified as, and I prefer and I like the word, this is a mitigative effort to be able to deal with a concern, an issue, a facility, that it continues to be a discussion, and it continues to have that classification of NIMBY, not in my backyard. And as the retiring speaker had spoken with regards to the facility, for lack of a better term, that exists in Orad, yeah, let's be honest, it's a dump. And the people of that beautiful village have had the unfortunate, that their village was, has been unfortunately designated as the site of the dump. I'm glad that there is now efforts to be able to not only close that and mitigate that, but then this legislation further recognizes that for the many years that we've had to, that you've had to endure the stench, the continuous stench, that many years that you're going to have to continue to endure, you know, the fallout, if you will, or even the continuous stench that's going to occur because of what is there, that it's only proper that they also, we also recognize that they will continue to be a host community, if you will. You know, Mr. Speaker, this is not a compromise, if you will, I don't think anybody, again, it goes back to not, nobody wants to have a facility like this, you know, close to where they live. But this helps to, again, to use that term, mitigate the unpleasantness, the inconvenience, the notoriety, if you will, that these two villages have because of the necessity for what is being placed there. And if you notice too, Mr. Speaker, when we talk about the amounts that are provided, the amounts that are going to be provided are for, to help the community fund projects that improve the lives of those, not only in that community, but in the surrounding communities. You know, let's face it, this island is only so large, and I think that everybody would be able to take advantage of the different opportunities and the improvements that are, that can be placed in these villages through the utilization of these mitigative funds. So it's money well spent. It's money that's going to be well spent. And it's going to be for, it's going to be for park improvements, it's going to be for, you know, community center improvements. It's going to be for improvements into the community infrastructure that not only the people of Malolo and Orad are going to be able to take advantage of, but everybody.
It could be for dispensaries.
Okay? It's going to be for everybody. So the island benefits from this. And so with that, Mr. Speaker, I want to keep this short. Again, I want to applaud, I want to applaud the author, I want to applaud the co-sponsors too, Senator Ada and myself, and now Senator Panglinen, because this is an example of where money is going to be well spent. This is an example of recognizing that there are times when we're going to ask communities to be able to step up to the plate, but we recognize that because in stepping up the plate, we also have an obligation to help them in making sure that they're not as inconvenienced or they're no longer inconvenienced, or they're recognized for their inconvenience that we're placing on them. So, Mr. Speaker, I stand in support of Bill 303, that's 30, and I ask all my colleagues likewise to support this measure as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Next, the chair recognizes Senator Buñata, Senator Buñta Barnes.
That was a good one. See, just, Ma, see, Mr. Speaker, I take my breath there for a minute. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this bill 303, sponsored by the good author, I'd like to say from Chalampago, but formerly from Inarahan, families from there, both villages. And I really want to say, Mr. Speaker, that I thank her for having the passion and the drive to move this bill forward, and also to share with this body that when she first came into office as a new kid on the block, and she spoke about this, she had come, she came up to me and asked me if I could share with her in this bill, and I shared with her that we had, we had, in committee, a draft of this same bill on the concept that she had, and that we were trying to work out some kinks, and she said, okay, I understand. And I said, but that doesn't stop you from proceeding and moving forward with your bill and the intent and why. And, you know, as our previous speakers spoke, Mr. Speaker, whether it be a mitigation, whether it be a finding a alternative, whether it be looking at an avenue so that we could take care of these issues and concerns, because everybody's right, nobody wants a dump in their backyard, nobody wants to deal with the environmental issues, with the safety issues, with the community concerns when it comes to that. So of course, just like Mayor Taitegui had mentioned, we will continue to be powerless in this effort, but if this is one way to at least bring some kind of working together and a realization of looking at a resource or looking for an opportunity to build upon the bad and turn it good, then this is one bill that could work. And, you know, Senator Taitegui, the good senator from Chalampago, said, I'm not going to let down on this bill. And she didn't. She proceeded, she worked closely with the Appropriations Chair, she worked closely with her colleagues to continue that, and I'm just saddened that I didn't personally follow through in saying, you know, what a good bill this was, and I just want to note for the record that in this effort, that if she can include me as a sponsor, I'd so gladly be humbled by that request, and so I'm hoping that when she closes, that she can include me in. But you know, Mr. Speaker, in all fairness, the previous speakers spoke about this, and though it is not a fix, fix, an all fix, like I said, whether we call it a mitigation, whether we call it a partial alternative, whether we call it, whatever we call it, we know that this host community accommodating plan is a win for both villages. And I say that, you know, Mayor Gogui spoke about the years, not years, but decades and decades of troubles and concerns that Chalampago ordered had because of its dump, and is continuing to try to close that today. And Inarahan feeling is powerless as they are, because no matter what, this is going to happen, we need to see the bigger picture, and knowing that we need to work with the community, I think that this is a way to move forward, to engage with the community, to work with both council members, I mean, with all the council members, but more importantly, to protect and to ensure that there will be opportunities for the communities when the resources are there, so that they can provide for their children and their children's children when it comes to the projects they need to work on within their community. And with that being said, I support this effort, I want to ask my colleagues to look at this bill carefully and fight it in their heart to support the same, and thank the good author from Chalampago in advance for making me a part of that sponsorship when she closes. Thank you. See you, Ma.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Speaker Juan Pat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The two, the authors turned around to look at me, I guess, looking at me, because probably the only individual right now, I guess, who should be more silent, it would be myself on this particular subject, because I live across the street from where the landfill will be. And, Mr. Speaker, when this subject first came up, I was very concerned, and met with the mayor and the MPC, and this was years ago, when it was first discussed, and had proposed that the community submit a request that, because they are going to be the host community, that there definitely needs to be some sort of compensation or mitigation, as the previous speaker had stated, because the community will be hosting the site for the municipal solid waste. So, Mr. Speaker, because there is that definite conflict, I couldn't very well have introduced the bill. I have actually prepared a bill since last year, but it sat in my office, and then I had asked Senator Barnes if she could introduce it. And at that time, when she was ready to introduce it, naturally, another bill was introduced, and by Senator Taitegui, hence then the reason for not introducing a second bill, and rather supporting Senator Taitegui's bill. But just to give you an idea of what it is that's in the bill that was actually prepared as, in terms of what the compensation should be, and there are five, actually, no, there's more. One was that the residents, the host community, shall receive a fee of $1 per ton of waste received by the landfill each month, and that all fees then collected shall be deposited into the host community fund. But then, as you know, because of the USDA loan, we were told then that in order to, for USDA to release that particular loan for the landfill, is that we needed then to introduce legislation to remove any type or any exemptions for the tipping fee. So that would have just been thrown out, I guess, or based on the judge's position with other bills, is actually declared now and void. The other benefit or compensation to the residents was to actually say that residential dwellings within the municipality of a host community shall pay a discounted residential tipping fee equal to 50% of the monthly residential tipping fee. And then again, that being the same thing in terms of getting a discounted fee again would have been rejected. The third is, the government of Guam agrees to guarantee the property values of all real estate adjacent and bordering the landfill footprint boundary. The government of Guam and the property owner shall each select an independent licensed appraiser, the cost of which shall be paid for by the government of Guam. Each appraiser shall determine the diminution in value to the real property caused by the proximity to the landfill by determining the difference between the fair market value of the real property, assuming no landfill is proposed or constructed, and the fair market value at the time of exercising this option. And it goes, you know, even further to define this. So that, again, Mr. Speaker, was another mitigation as well for the landowners who live, who are, whose properties, real estate, is adjacent to the landfill and/or bordering the landfill. And that's always been the contention of anyone, you know, we always say, not in my backyard, because they know that the minute you have a landfill there, it's definitely going to reduce the value of your real estate. And wanting to make sure that that does not happen, you know, hence this amendment that was part of the bill that was to be introduced. of the bill that was to, to be introduced. And then it goes on, you know, further about not co-mingling, you know, any of the funds, keeping it separate to be administered by the mayor of the host committee with the approval of the municipal council, because that was, you know, the, the discussion at the time before, of course, we have Bill 303. So, and, and I know that the, the chairperson, I mean, the author of the bill had indicated that in her statement during the public hearing, that she realizes too, that, you know, and we all know that, that when a bill comes before the, the floor, is that there may be some amendments that could very well add on to the language of, and to, to either make the bill a better bill, to be able to refine and clarify and/or just add other language to the bill. So, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to, to, Mr. Pres, Mr. Chairman, President, Speaker, I'd like to offer this amendment then, after sharing this, not so much in terms of the fees itself, because we know that that would not fly, so to speak, at the district court, but in, in terms of the government's fiduciary responsibility, then to families, whether it be in the Oradot area or the Malolu area, what I just read, that the government of Guam agrees to guarantee the property values of all real estate adjacent and bordering the landfill footprint boundary. So, and what I can do is that I'm having it typed, the amendment typed up, so that I'll be able to give everyone a copy of, of the amendment. So if I can be allowed to come back as soon as it's ready, and maybe somebody else may want to speak on, I know I don't want to take away too much time, you know, for recess while it is being prepared, but to continue the process.
Unless there's another speaker, let's take a very short recess. Oh, did, Senator Ada, did you wish to speak?
On the main.
Yes. Oh, oh, no, on the, on the main bill before we get a copy of the amendment. Okay. Then, while we wait for the amendment, we'll take a short recess.
You can call us back in.
We're back in session. Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, to be able to at least show the, the amendment to the primary author and the second cosponsor, or the first cosponsor of the bill. And I'll just go ahead and withdraw my amendment. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. The amendment being withdrawn. Are there any other speakers on the bill? Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just very briefly, I am the first cosponsor for the bill, and I certainly want to commend the author of the bill for having taken this initiative to introduce this particular measure. I'm glad that, of course, both Oradot and Chalampago, I mean, Oradot and Ledzon have been included, and, and, and as the other speakers before me have indicated, it's really not, you know, they're unsure, should we call this mitigation? Should we call it a compensation for the, the insult that's being, you know, placed upon the community by having to require them to put a landfill in their, in their, in their backyards? But whatever the case is, I think this is a good start to be able to compensate the community, to somehow offset some of the negative impacts that the landfills have caused to, to these two villages. And so I stand in full support, and I certainly ask the rest of my colleagues to similarly support this measure, so that these two villages can begin receiving the additional funds, so that they can start putting in the amenities that really their, the, the residents of these villages should be able to enjoy, to somewhat offset the negative impacts of the landfill. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Are there any other speakers before I call the main sponsor? Seeing no requests to speak, the main sponsor is recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to thank everyone who spoke in support of, of my bill, Bill 303. I'd like to especially thank Mr. Tom Bartzinos, who approached me with regards to this. Like I say, you tell it to tello, you expect results. But most especially, I'd like to thank my colleagues, definitely Senator Ada, the second cos, the first cosponsor of the bill. We have spent hours in, in a room with other, with other staff members to go over this bill, to make it a win-win situation for everyone, but also most especially to recognize those villages that are most affected, starting with Oradot-Chalampago. When you say Oradot, Mr. Speaker, what do you think of? You think of dump. And this has been shadowed over that village's name for so long, and it will continue to be shadowed over there for maybe another decade. But in the meantime, they will have the means to get out of that shadow and become a community that has great parks, baseball fields, community centers, a mayor's office that's well-equipped to provide for their village, the people in their village. And this is a beginning for them. Actually, the beginning should have happened 60 years ago for Oradot-Chalampago. Now, Inarahan. What do you think of when you hear the word Inarahan or the village Inarahan? Historical Inarahan? I guess people my age remember Kalapana, Inarahan, Making My Home With You, the beautiful, beautiful village of Inarahan. The people of Inarahan today feel defeated, left out, neglected. Their voices, they felt, have not been heard. The public hearing we had down in Inarahan, you could just see defeat in their eyes. They're thinking, what, this bill that's coming up to help compensate his host community, is it really going to go through? Are you guys really going to listen to us this time? Are you really going to hear us this time? I ask my colleagues, please, hear the voices of Inarahan this time. Don't forget them. Don't forget the name that they had for many years to be known as Inarahan, historical Inarahan, beautiful Inarahan. This compensation, this apology, this mitigation, whatever the word is, we need to help Inarahan to keep that legacy going on, providing them the opportunity to keep their name that's not shadowed by now the Ledzon landfill. And we can do it today with the help of my colleagues. I'd like to thank Senator Panglinen, or, I'm not supposed to say the name, am I? Committee, is it okay? Okay. I'd like the good chair of this committee, all his efforts, even taking it down to the village of Inarahan was, you know, he, he didn't have to do that. We had a public hearing here, but he wanted to make sure that the village of Inarahan is heard, and he's there, no matter how far it was or the drive, and I'm sure he enjoyed it, because I have for many years. So, that being said, Mr. Speaker, please, my colleagues, hear the voices of Inarahan, and let Oradot-Chalampago know, we did not forget. Thank you. Oh, one last thing.
Your motion?
Yes. I'd like to motion to place as a cosponsor, Senator Panglinen, and then Senator Tina Munya Barnes, as cosponsors on Bill 303-30.
And the motion to move it to?
Third reading file.
To voting file.
A voting file, yes.
So ordered. Without objection, so ordered. We have a few more minutes, and I think we can take another bill. The next bill on the schedule is 337, the main sponsor is not present, it'll move to the bottom. After that, it's 338, the main sponsor is Senator Munya Barnes. You are recognized, Madam Secretary.
See, do a small, see, that little Speaker Cruz, I'd like to move Bill 338-30 to the third reading, and I'd like to just speak briefly on it.
Seeing no objections, so ordered. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, this Bill 338-30COR, as introduced by myself, is an act to amend subsections 7120.3 to Chapter 7, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to the Inclusion of Spouses, Widows, and Widowers in the Eligibility for Issuance of Special Gold Star License Plates. Miss, Mr. Speaker, this bill is a similar, is a similar bill to legislation that has already been passed, and the good Senator or Speaker, former Speaker from Baragata had introduced legislation in reference to having this special gold star license plates for those members who, who, parents, or, parents, or who, of, of those who died during, during war. And when that legislation was passed, the spouses and widows and widowers were not included into that, and just something that fell through the cracks, Mr. Speaker, and what this bill would do is would the, would place the eligibility for issuance of this gold star license plate to those, parents, inclusives of mother, father, stepmother, stepfather, and mother through adoption, father through adoption, and foster parents be a part of those who can qualify for the gold star license plates, which honors the fallen soldier. The inclusion on this bill would include spouses, widows, and widowers. Mr. Speaker, when, when this bill was being introduced, the family members had come to me from those, from the fallen soldiers, the last two fallen soldiers, and asked why spouses weren't included. And to no fault of anybody in here, it was just probably an oversight. They wanted to make sure that if they had to remember all the, how would I say this, the freedoms that we live today, is because these soldiers paid the ultimate sacrifice and had given up their lives. and had given up their lives. Then, if we need to pay recognition or pay tribute, what little way than to work on something as small as this, Mr. Speaker, so that these folks will never forget? You know, one of the constituents came up and said, "I wear this small little gold pin on my lapel to honor my brother." There are not too many people who wear this little lapel pin, nor do they know what this pin, this little tiny pin, stands for. But maybe if you support our cause, people who drive by and look at the Gold Star license plate will know that freedom is not free and that someone in my family has sacrificed his life for your freedom. And he also noted that this special place, Mr. Speaker, that we live in is a very special place for families, and he asks that please do not leave family members out for those who want to continue to recognize the sacrifices and the lives so that freedom can be here today. Mr. Speaker, I only have one copy, but I just want to share with you that Department of Revenue and Tax, based on the last bill that was passed into law, it was from the committee, and I stand corrected, yes, that there was a design that was that portrays the Gold Star on the license plate. So I'd like to just submit this for the record and share it with my colleagues, and I'll have my colleague speak more on the idea and the concept that came about, so.
There being no objection, it'll be added to the record for the day. Thank you.
Thank you. And I ask, Mr. Speaker, that my colleagues find it in their hearts to look at this Bill 338 for the families, like the Moore families and the Liangorrel families, who've lost a loved one, so that we may be free today and have them be given the opportunity to have something that is a representation of their loved one whenever they drive, and this would be that reflection on that Gold Star license plate. So I ask my colleagues to please support that, and I also know that there are a couple of my colleagues who worked closely on this matter and also worked with a lot of the family members that were involved, and I'd like for them to be included as co-sponsors, Mr. Speaker, and that would be Senator Tom Ada and Speaker Ben Pangolinen to be a part of the sponsorship of this bill.
Hearing, is there any objection? Hearing, no objection.
Oh, in order, Tom Ada in order, and then Ben Pangolinen, yes, second and third. Yes, sir.
Hearing, no objection, so ordered.
And again, I just want to thank this august body for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of this Bill 338 and giving me the opportunity so that I may share with this body and ask them to please humbly ask my colleagues to support this measure for the sake of the families. Cisus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. The chair now recognizes the first co-sponsor, Senator Tomas Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I must admit that when this bill has tried to get on the agenda several different times and several different times, I objected to it because the Gold Star recognition has always really been reserved for the mothers of the fallen soldiers. And I've always believed that, I was convinced, that that relationship between a mother and that soldier is something very special and has no equal. But then I came across one of the spouses and my own wife, and she says, "You know, you had that special relationship with your mother for 20 years as you were growing up, and that special relationship still exists to this day." But then there came a point in one's life where I decided that I wanted to start a new life with another partner, my wife, and I've spent approximately four decades with her now. And over that period of time, we have formed a relationship that also has, is equal to none, a very special relationship. And so when a spouse loses a partner, certainly the grieving is just as hard as a mother losing a son, a wife losing a husband, a husband losing a wife is also a very heavy burden to bear. And so because of that, I then have changed my position and believe that we've got to recognize that special relationship between a husband and a wife. Two individuals who have made the decision to start a life together, make sacrifices together, bring up a family, certainly that cannot go unnoticed. And so because of that, I've decided, I took the position that really we've got to give that recognition to the spouses also. So then comes the question, so do we have a license plate for Gold Star mothers and a license plate for Gold Star spouses? And what happened was then we actually convened a, as the Committee on Veterans Affairs, actually convened a working group because under the law that was initially introduced by Speaker Pangolinen, which authorized the Gold Star plate, in that law was also the requirement that the Administrator for the Veterans Affairs Office and the Director for Rev and Tax were supposed to have gone together and come up with a design for a license plate. Well, when we were looking at this issue, we found that six months later, I believe this was enacted back in around September, so almost six, seven months later, nothing had happened. And so the Committee on Veterans Affairs got a group together, representatives from Rev and Tax, the Veterans Affairs Administrator, a widow, and an advocate from the National Guard. And we sat down and came up with a design which basically says on the license plate, "Remember the fallen." And on the left-hand side, in compliance with the law, it provides there a logo that represents the Gold Star pin. And then between the alpha character and the numeric characters is your, basically the field cross, which is the boots, the upside-down rifle, and the helmet. And everyone that was in that working group agreed. Department of Revenue and Tax thought that this design was feasible and that we could actually begin, go in and take a look at producing these Gold Star plates. And with the passage of this particular bill today, that will then make eligible, there's actually nothing that's stopping Rev and Tax right now from going out and ordering these Gold Star plates. What the bill that we're discussing today does is it will make eligible the widows or the widowers of the fallen soldiers to be eligible to be issued a Gold Star license plate, so that people in our community recognize that here's a family that have lost someone close to them that has made the ultimate sacrifice so that we can continue to enjoy the freedoms that we have today. So, Mr. Speaker, I ask my colleagues to please support the bill, but before I sit down, I would like to just make one minor amendment. On page two, on line 23, it reads that the new eligibles would be spouses, widows, and widowers. And quite honestly, if my wife, I lost my wife in battle, she made the ultimate sacrifice, I would then be a widower. If I was the one that died in battle, my surviving spouse would be a widow. So I don't think we need the word spouse there because she's either going to be, person's either going to be a widow or a widower. So I moved to strike the word spouses on line 23. That's my motion, Mr. Speaker.
On the amendment, does anybody need it in writing, or can we just deal with the amendment without it being circulated? Any objection to the amendment? No objection? On the amendment, going once, twice, hearing, no objection. Any other senator wish to speak on the bill? If not, the main sponsor is recognized to close.
Cisus Massey, Tatlu, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to thank the retiring speaker who spoke about the bill, and I just want to note for the record, Mr. Speaker, that out of the 50 states, 43 states have this legislation in place on the Gold Star plates, and two are working on legislation. And I just want to ask, again, ask my colleagues to please find it in their hearts to vote for this simple measure to honor and remember the fallen, and that that representation of that Gold Star would mean the world to them. Cisus Massey, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and ask that it be on the voting file.
On the motion to move it to voting file, hearing, no objection, so ordered. Mr. Majority Leader, I understand you have a motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise to a notwithstanding-the-House-rules type of a motion, that we take Bill 271-30 from the voting file and bring it to the top of the second reading file for a minor amendment that will be offered by the sponsor.
Any objection to bringing, notwithstanding the House rules, to bring Bill 271-30 back to second reading file for the purpose of a minor amendment by the sponsor? Hearing, no objection, ordered. Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I would like to offer an amendment, and amendment has just been passed already. It's a very simple amendment, and that is to add a new section six to Bill 271, just one line, that section 3104 of chapter three of title five, Guam Code Annotated, is here to be repealed.
Any objection? Anybody wish to speak on the motion? Hearing, no objection, ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Is there another notwithstanding? I thought there was going to be another amendment, or is that just a minor?
Yeah, just so it's clear, as Senator Taddeekway has asked, Mr. Speaker, on the matter of Bill 303-30, the title of the bill only reflects Inarahan. It should read Inarahan and Ordot. I told you that was a technical amendment that we can address through council.
All right. As long as that is recognized as a technical amendment, it's a technical amendment, and it'll be, the amendment will be made by legal counsel. It's technical amendment, so it's taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
And, Ms. Speaker, I move that we recess until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow.
Hearing, no objection.